Please rise to salute the flag.
Our president alleges to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, founded on indivisible liberty and justice for all.
The clerk will call the roll.
Counselor Vido. Counselor Abadana.
President.
Counselor Recupero.
Yeah.
Counselor Garcia.
Present.
Counselor Vega Maldonado.
Present.
Counselor Robinson.
Yeah.
Counselor Rodriguez. Counselor Taylor.
I'm here.
Counselor Lopez.
Here.
Counselor Brown.
Here.
And Counselor Zabat.
Present.
Ten members present, one absent. Mr. Chairman, you have a call.
Counselor Recupero.
I'd like to make a point of personal interest.
Privilege?
Per- personal privilege.
You have the floor, sir.
Okay. I would like to-
Please raise the microphones at the-
I would like to begin by saying I would like to apologize to anybody that felt offended by my statement. It wasn't my intent. There was taken all out of context that that's that wasn't my intent to offend or hurt anybody. That's not my that wasn't my intention. It is still not my intention, so I'd like to apologize. But I also I strongly believe that I don't agree with what Columbus did. I don't agree with it at all. I believe whatever he did, it was a wrong thing, but I also believe that he did a good thing. He brought the Latino culture to America. And as far as that now, I would like to know, you're gonna hear tonight something about me. And I would like to tell you what kind of a human being I am, what kind of a person I am, and where I come from. So people don't misunderstand. You're gonna hear that I'm a white supremacist. I'm not a white supremacist. For one, I am married to an Afro-Latino woman. And I have thirteen Afro-mixed children. And I have thirty-nine grandchildren of Guatemalan, Honduran, Puerto Rican, Salvadorian, Colombian, Ecuadorians. I have from Cuba. I have all of them. My family is the most diverse family you ever gonna see. It is very wrong to slander me, to say that I am a white supremacist. For one, I am a Latin man. For two, you're judging me for what I look like, not for what I am or because I had a statement. My personal belief is my own. My opinion is my own. We all have an opinion in this world. If you can't have an opinion, then we might as well don't exist. People that slander me and says that I'm a white supremacist are the ones that are more prejudiced. They're being thought, "I'm sorry." Maybe that's not their intent. And I didn't intend to say anything bad to any person at all. What I said is what I believed. And if I speak loud, I'm sorry because I'm deaf, so I speak loud. My intention was not to hurt or attack anybody or to do anything. It was just my own opinion. And my own opinion is my own opinion. It doesn't deter that I shouldn't be called and be slandered and be called a racist, a white supremacist. A Latin man is not a white supremacist. I've never been a white supremacist. I know what it is to be prejudiced against. I know what it is. I'm sorry if I speak loud. But I'm passionate about you slandering me. It's no need to slander someone because of my opinion. That was just an opinion. We're all entitled to it. That's all it is. It's not my belief. I shouldn't be labeled as a white supremacist because I'm not. I've never been. I know what racism is. I know what it is because I've seen it. I've seen it through my eyes. I've seen it through my children's eyes. I've seen what they can do. So someone that has seen it and knows what racism is, knows firsthand exactly what it is, and discrimination would never, never, in this whole world, never say or become one. I always taught my children not to be racist because that's the worst thing to do. That's what I taught my children, not to be racist. And whoever is teaching these young men and women to be racist, because that's the wrong thing to teach. It's not the right thing to think that-
Thirty seconds, Mr. Recupero.
Huh?
Thirty seconds.
Thirty seconds. I thought I could speak as much as I want on that.
No.
Thirty seconds, okay. So here's my last statement. Here's the bottom line. I've never I don't like white supremacists. I'm not wanna be associated with them, and I have nothing to do with them. I'm sorry if I offended anybody on what I said, but that is the whole thing. I'm not that. I don't wanna be slandered. I don't want my Latino children to be slandered. I don't want my Afro-Latino wife to be slandered because I'm not a white supremacist. I shouldn't be labeled as one because of an opinion. We all have opinions. That's it, and I'm not. So I shouldn't be labeled a white supremacist. If you don't know what I am and you don't know what my family is, don't accuse someone of being something that they're not. I'm not. And if I talk loud, I repeat myself again because I'm deaf. I have never been one. Thank you. Thank you very much. And again, I apologize if I offended anybody by my statements. My intent wasn't to offend anybody or to make anybody feel hurt in any way.
We'll now move on to memorials and celebratory resolutions. We have the resolution introduced by Counselor Zabat and other members of the council to regards to Women's History Month.
Whereas American women of every race, class, and ethnic background have made historic contributions to the growth and strength of our nation in countless recorded and unrecorded ways. Whereas American women have played and continue to play a critical economic, cultural, and social role in every sphere of the life of our city by constituting a significant portion of the labor force working inside and outside of the home. Whereas during the COVID-19 pandemic, the women of Chelsea have continued to exemplify their commitment to humanitarian, social, environmental, and economic causes by being at the forefront of volunteering, organizing, and working within the community and home. Whereas American women were particularly important in the establishment of really charitable, philanthropic, and cultural institutions in our nation. Whereas American women of every race, class, and ethnic background served as early leaders in the forefront of every major progressive social change movement. Whereas American women have been leaders not only in securing their own rights of suffrage and equal opportunity, but also in the abolitionist movement, the emancipation movement, the industrial labor movement, the civil rights movement, and other movements, especially the peace movement, which created a more free and just society for all. Whereas despite these contributions of all of American women in history has been consistently overlooked and undervalued in the literature, teaching, and study of American history. Now therefore be it resolved that the Chelsea City Council that march is designated as Women's History Month.
Chair recognizes Counselor Zabat.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to acknowledge that today, March 8th.
Counselor Zabat, would you like to make a motion first, a motion to adopt under suspension or a roll call vote?
Motion to adopt under suspension. And may I-
You may speak now.
Thank you. So today is International Women's Day, March 8th. And it is a global day celebrating the social, economic, cultural, and political achievements of women. The day also makes a call to ask and promote women's equality. International Women's Day has endured well over a century with the first International Women's Day tavern in nineteen ninety, supported by over a million people. Today, International Women's Day belongs to all groups collectively everywhere. International Women's Day is not country, group, or organization specific. And one more thing is Cora Thompson and Garrett Owens' work for driving gender parity is what makes International Women's Day impactful. Gloria Steinem, world-renowned feminist, journalist, and activist, once explained, "The story of women's struggle for equality runs to no single feminist nor to anyone else in the nation, but to the collective efforts of all who care about human rights." So to everyone out there, make International Women's Day and Women's History Month and every day your day, do what you can and to truly make a positive change for women all around the world. Thank you.
Chair recognizes Vice President Garcia.
Thank you, Mr. President. I will be brief, and I will start by wishing all the women here present and all the women joining us virtually, as well as the women joining us on YouTube, Facebook, and all of our social media platforms, Happy International Women's Day, Happy Women's History Month. I feel so proud to not only share this space with four wonderful, three other wonderful women, but also to be here in the presence of other powerful women who have contributed in their own ways to fight the good fight, either that be in our recreational department, either that be in our environmental justice side of things, but also all the other women who are not present here, who have also contributed during this pandemic, who have been key voices and allies in moving the needle forward and improving our communities. So to all the women that in any way have contributed, to all the young ladies here who are also contributing in their own ways, advocating for what they believe is right. You all are so inspirational, all of you. I applaud you for your contributions, and I look forward to continue working alongside many of you to bring change in our community. So I hope that every single one of you gets recognized beyond just on this day, but for the remainder of time. So thank you all. Thank you to all the department heads, women, who make the city hall function every single day, and to all the workers. So ladies, it's been an honor to serve alongside you, and I hope that we get more women elected and more women on boards and commissions that are equally as important. So thank you, everyone, and thank you to the man who signed on this resolution to acknowledge our work. So, thanks.
Counselor Brown.
I'd all the women for this day to celebrate International Women's Day on March 8th. Also, the month of March, we also celebrate the accomplishments and the great deed of work and the sacrifice that the women have made, mothers and sisters and daughters. And, you know, we think about our Vice President, Vice President Harris. We think about our Congresswoman, Ayanna Pressley. We think about our local leaders here, as Counselor had mentioned. But we also have to remember those women before them, the Susan B. Anthony's, the Shirley Chismes of New York, the first woman who was elected, black African-American woman who was elected to Congress almost fifty-two years ago to this day. So those women and more women have continued to fight and bring the good fight, as my colleagues said, and we need to continue to embrace them and support them. And maybe and hopefully, within the next few years, we'll have a female president to continue the good work that's been done. I wanna thank the maker for this resolution. I wanna thank him for inviting us to sign on it. It's a great motion. It's a great resolution. It's a great way to start off the month of March. Thank you, Mr. President.
Counselor Recupero.
I'd like to say thank you to all the mothers and all the daughters and all the women. I have eight wonderful daughters, and each one of them is the joy of my life. The best part of man is woman, so without a woman, there would be no man, and it is a great thing. So I would like to recognize them and say thank you to all the women of the world for making this a better place for all of us.
Counselor Lopez.
Yes, thank you to Counselor Zabat for putting this order, and Counselor Judy Garcia also, and the rest who signed this order. First of all, I wanna start saying, I wanna congratulate my mother, my wife, my sister and my daughter, and our colleagues, city councilwomen, and our leaders, women leaders in Chelsea. So I wanna say thank you for all the work you guys do, and congratulations on this month. Thank you.
Any others? Seeing none, we'll move on to the next item on our agenda, a celebratory resolution in regards to thanking City Manager Tom Ambrosino. Whereas Thomas G. Ambrosino was born on November twenty-one, nineteen sixty-one, to Frederick and Margaret Ambrosino of Riviere, Massachusetts. And whereas Tom Ambrosino became the city of Chelsea's third city manager on July twenty, twenty fifteen. Whereas Mr. Ambrosino, throughout his six years of service for the city, has brought a human-centered approach to the government role in the city with projects such as the Downtown Broadway Initiative, park and road enhancement, business and housing grants, as well as innovative systems for residents such as 3-1-1 and online application services. And whereas during the worldwide COVID-19 pandemic, Mr. Ambrosino managed the crisis by addressing the needs of residents such as housing and food insecurity, has supported the public school system, created a responsive city hall, and worked alongside the community organizations. And therefore be it resolved that the Chelsea City Council and the City of Chelsea would like to say thank you for your efforts during this time, but also your years of service. You've been an exceptional administrator. You are humble, a great listener, an amazing leader, an inspiration, and a role model. The City of Chelsea is blessed to have you. Introduced by Counselor Lopez and Counselor Recupero. At this time, I recognize Counselor Lopez.
First of all, I would like to say thank you, Mr. Ambrosino, for incredible, incredible leader you over the past few years. But you show you show us your dedication, commitment, and strength as a leader this past year. It is an honor to work alongside you, appreciate the passion you bring to this work, and you take everything we at the city council or the community present to you seriously. The city of Chelsea and our residents are so lucky to have you, to serve us as a city manager. Thank you very much for all what you do.
Counselor Recupero.
I expressed the same feeling my fellow counselors said, and I would like to add that Mr. Ambrosino is a very humble man. Anybody can get a hold of him anytime they want to. He's a great and capable city manager, and what is lacking in the world is more people like him that are intelligent enough, but yet don't think they're better than anybody else. They're just people like the rest of us, and he is a position to make people's lives better, and he does. He's very he's a great human being. That is a great feeling to know that someone that's running our city is a great human being, that you can ask him anything, and he gives you the respect, and he looks at you, and he says to you the same as anybody else, and that's a great thing to know. So my appreciation is to say that, Mr. Ambrosino, you are a great city manager, and this city is, like my fellow counselor said, is very blessed to have someone like you. And I'm glad that you're here, and I thank you for your service to all the people of Chelsea. Can we suspend the rule so I can get-
Hold on. We're still not we're still discussing the resolution. Vice President Garcia.
Thank you, Mr. President. I will be brief, but I also want to add to the sentiment. And for the record, I would also like to sign on to this resolution. I think it's well deserved. One of the best decisions that the committee made was to hire you. I think that there has been no other leader who has led with such empathy and compassion. You have an incredible work ethic. I must say, for the people who are watching at home and some of the people who are here, you may not know this, but I have been at City Hall at 6:00 a.m., and I have seen Tom Ambrosino be here at 6:00 a.m. You're the first person to get here. You're one of the last people to leave this office. And I you have shown incredible, incredible dedication to this community, incredible work ethic, but above all, incredible empathy. I love your open door policy. I love that you're willing always to meet with anyone, regardless of who they are, either a resident, either an employee, a city council member. You're willing always to answer questions, any doubt, and you always do it with an open heart. So we thank you for your service, and this is well deserved. So I'd like to commend my colleagues for for your thoughtful idea of presenting this resolution. You deserve that and much more, Mr. Ambrosino. So thank you for your leadership.
Counselor Zabat.
Thank you. I would like to sign on to the resolution and commend my colleagues as well for it, Counselors Lopez and Recupero. And just to be very brief, to reflect on what Counselor Garcia said, I remember when before I was the city councilor and approached you, Mr. Ambrosino, the city manager, and how this atmosphere worked to me. And I was a resident, and it didn't matter when I became a city councilor. I was treated with the same respect and very, always very, very responsive, and thoughtful, and compassionate, and I agree with what my colleagues said. He's a really great leader, a great communicator, and we really, we are. So thank you.
Counselor Brown.
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, I'll be very brief. I would just wanna say thank you. I'd like to sign on to the resolution as well. Tom, just wanted to appreciate you. It's eleven different personalities up here. I can only imagine what you see when you go home. You have a lot of department heads that you have to deal with. You surround yourself with good personnel from, you know, our legal department all the way down to Fidel, to other members of the staff here. It's a credit to you that folks wanna work with you, folks wanna listen to you. I also can state that many times I've seen you waiting on the train, catching at seven forty-five going into Boston, and you're flying up, trying to beat the tracks, the train before the tracks come across. But really, honestly, you know, during the pandemic, you kinda hustled us all together. You made time for me. I know that for sure. I'm sure you made time for other colleagues. But anytime I had a question regarding what was going on and what I was hearing, whether it been from a constituent or whether it been for a business person that's trying to get in to see you, there was never a problem. It was straightforward, straight communication, direct contact. And, you know, you just build on the other two city managers we had prior to you. Guy Sanagate, who I served with for about a few months, and Jay Ash, different personalities, different styles. We didn't truly know what we were getting. We were looking for someone to fill Jay Ash's shoes when he left. You've done a great job. I'm not sure if you got the same size that Jay had, but you know what? You've held your own, and we're very appreciative of your work. Thank you.
Counselor Robinson.
Actually, I chaired that committee when we were looking for a new city manager. And obviously, we made the right choice in selecting Tom. Thomas had a very open door policy. And anytime that you needed Tom, no matter what time of day or night, he always answered the call. I just wanna thank you for being here for us and being here for the residents of our community. I wanna thank you.
Seeing no further speakers. We have a request to suspend the rules for a presentation of the resolution.
Yes.
Okay.
Just wanna say thank you to the council. This was unexpected, but I very much appreciate the kind words. I really do love working for the city of Chelsea, so I just wanna tell you that. Thank you.
Before we move on to public hearing, I just wanna state that the city manager was presented with a resolution from State Senator Saldi Domenico. Unfortunately, he could not make it. He did try to link on, but there were technical difficulties, but he wanted to send his regards to the presentation tonight. At this time, we were going to move on to the next item on our agenda, which is public hearing. But it is public hearing on the proposed zoning amendments, municipal harbor plan, marijuana establishment, and the Route sixteen change to business highway. Solely the zoning amendments tonight at this time. We will move on to public speaking later on, but the public hearing portion is only on to discuss the zoning amendments. So if anyone here would like to make a comment, you have four minutes to discuss the proposed zoning amendments. Please step up to the mic, state your name, your address, and you have four minutes. Thank you.
My name is Roseanne Bonjimani. I live at Seven Bell Street, and I'm the Executive Director of Green Roots. I'm here to speak out against the proposed changes to the R1 and R2 zoning amendments for increased density. It was just about a year ago this week that our lives in Chelsea and in the world changed forever. And I'd like you to go back to those early few months where folks were shut down in their homes with children, with almost no backyards, no side yards, no public parks to go to. What the R1 and R2 increased density is proposing to do is create more housing on smaller lots and reducing or eliminating the open space requirements. In a city that is one of the densest in the nation with the least amount of open space, we need to be thinking more proactively. We need to be thinking about families raising children here. We need to think about the long game, not the immediacy of a supposed housing crisis that the region should also be facing. The housing crisis that is facing Chelsea residents today is that our members of our community are being evicted and displaced because they can't afford to live here. They can't afford to live here because we are opening the doors to investors to come in and take single, small-family lots and max them out so that they can sell condos or rent out apartments at extremely high rates. You'll see from the letter that we sent, I just outlined, we outlined two parcels that although they wouldn't necessarily fit with this exact same description of increased density, those two parcels replaced two-family homes, two single-family homes, with eighteen units of housing. Tomorrow evening, there is a proposal on the CBA's agenda to take a single-family home and replace it with eight condo units. What we are doing by if if the city council approves this, what we are doing is basically saying to all of the developers and to the Zoning Board of Appeals, increase the density, reduce the lot sizes, eliminate side yards. I want you again to think about, as you all recognize the women out there, think about all of those mothers who have been home for the last year with their children. Thankfully, my children have a backyard to go and run around in. There are many that don't have that. I can't possibly imagine being locked in an apartment with no parks to go to and the parks were shut down, no backyard and no side yard for your kids to play in. What message are we sending? We are the city with the highest rate of COVID infections in the entire state for months on end. We're the community that has some of the least amount of open space. We're shouldering all of the region's industrial burden. We have eighty percent of our community is covered by impervious surfacing, asphalt, and concrete. What we need to do is think about the long game, not the immediacy. We need to think about a community process around zoning. We can't be doing these piecemeal approaches. What we need to think about as a city council and as a city is coming together. What do we want Chelsea to look like coming out of COVID-19? What do we want our city zoning to look like? If you approve this zoning tonight, it's essentially a nod in the direction of not caring what the community wants because this really hasn't been an inclusive process. Just to come here tonight, if I couldn't come here, I couldn't make my comments on Zoom, and yet I was almost turned away downstairs because I wasn't on the list. So how can we say that we're accepting a full, a fully participatory process by not really allowing and encouraging people to participate? Green Roots is suing the federal government and has filed several civil rights complaints with the state for excluding the participation of community members from a process to stop a substation in East Boston. Our process here in Chelsea is almost worse. It's worse. What are we doing? You all have a decision to make tonight, and I hope you think about the long game, a community-engaged process of thinking about healing and a rebirth for our city. If you vote this evening to increase this density, you're essentially opening the floodgates.
Thirty seconds, Ms. Bonjimani.
And then in it's several months' time, I hope that I don't hear you say, "We have to stop displacement, and we have to stop the evictions," because essentially, you're encouraging it and inviting it into our city. Thank you. because essentially, you're encouraging it and inviting it into our city. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Kyle Umemba. I'm from Thirty-Eighth Addison Street, Chelsea, Massachusetts. And I am here in support of the rezoning of the marijuana establishment. As Ms. Bonjani said, right, we're here to, I'm always, my agenda is always equal opportunity. Everyone deserves equal access and an equal chance. Right now, blacks and Latinos make up less than ten percent of ownership in marijuana businesses, while white people make up eighty-one percent of ownership. Blacks and Latinos only make up eleven percent of the workforce in the cannabis industry in Massachusetts, and most of them are entry-level, non-managerial roles. There are currently seven hundred and fifty approved or pending applications for white-owned businesses in Massachusetts, and only seventy-five approved or pending applications for minority-owned businesses. The median income in Chelsea, Massachusetts is fifty-three K. Under the current zoning rules that are set in place, the average rent per month is thirty-three thousand dollars. Where does that make sense? How does that make sense? If we are truly trying to commit to, if we're truly trying to commit to an inclusive society, we need to create equal opportunity for everybody. How many Chelsea residents are local marijuana retail establishment owners today? Zero. Why? It's not fair. The current marijuana retail laws are not fair. There is not an equal opportunity. No one has a fair chance, and there is not enough money. Why? Because we are restricted to the zoning that restricts us to paying thirty thousand dollars per month on average. I averaged five locations that were offered on Redfin and on Zillow and got thirty thousand dollars per month. When we put these laws in place, or when the Cannabis Commission put this in place, it was about creating an equal opportunity. Why? Because as a black male, my entire life has been stigmatized due to the effects of the war on drugs. And who do the war on drugs affect mostly disproportionately? Minorities, blacks and Latinx. And how are we planning to fix what we've tried to fix or what has happened in the past? This right here. This is supposed to be the equal opportunity. I believe that there are fair share of licenses for minority owners, but currently, that's not the case. Not for minority local owners. We don't have an equal opportunity. We don't have a fair chance. This is you guys' chance to make that right, to level the playing field, and to make an even chance for everyone in the community. I look forward to seeing your decisions and seeing where you guys stand with this. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Caroline Ellenberg. I live at one oh seven Shirlift Street here in Chelsea. I also work at Green Roots as the anti-displacement organizer. And I am here, along with Rosie, to urge you to vote down the zoning density amendments. Rosie described having a backyard. I live on Shirlift Street at Central. We do not have a backyard. I spent, my children and I spent the entire pandemic, when we couldn't get out to a park, on a fire escape that is, now we're maybe a little wider than this table in front of me. And that is true of all the children and families adjacent to our area. I feel very strongly that protecting what limited open space we have in the yards of our very densely-packed neighborhood, our neighborhood is where it took some of the hardest hit of COVID. It's where families, households are densely packed, and you need to be able to get outside. Outdoor should be part of our home spaces, so I'd like to say that. In addition, I'd like to ask, density for whom? There could be a reason, absolutely. There are reasons and times when you, when density is a good thing. But I think we need to be looking at affordability when we're talking density. I don't think there's any reason the city of Chelsea right now should be talking density without affordability being in that same sentence. So for that reason, I think this is a lost opportunity to pair those two. Without that, I do not think it makes sense to move forward. I will echo what Rosie said. I think that a larger process that involves the community, for the last year, you know, we've all been sidetracked by survival issues. We've been separated physically. But we have also shown that as a city, we know how to come together, how residents and the city and organizations can really come together and effect change. This year is a year, this has been an intense years, where we have had, very shown in our faces the inequities of this moment, as well as the inequities of this country's entire history. And, you know, especially in Chelsea, at the epicenter of the pandemic, land use is a very powerful way of furthering inequities. It also has the potential of breaking them down. So zoning, maybe people say, "That's not so interesting," but the power of land use decisions is huge. So the idea to stop, pause, think about creating a process that brings the people of Chelsea together for a comprehensive review, thinking big picture. What matters to the people in Chelsea, and how do we want to use our land? We live in a small city. There are many of us here. Land is precious. Land is power. Housing is power. Home is power. How do we want to use those? Not at a time when we can't get in here very easily. That's not the way to do it. We need to be intentional. So please don't decrease open space, especially not in our densely-packed neighborhoods. Please do prioritize affordable housing when you're thinking about increasing housing. Land use choices matter, and zoning tells a story about who we are. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jade Umemba, and I live at eighty-seven Parker Street in Chelsea, Mass. And I'm here to support the marijuana rezoning, and I'm going to give a few reasons why. So in two thousand and eighteen, over six hundred thousand people in the U.S. were charged for possessing marijuana, not for running some massive weed drug cartel, for simply having it on them. And despite making up only thirty-one percent of the population, blacks and Latinos accounted for nearly half of all weed arrests. Between eighty percent to ninety percent of the industry is run by white owners. So not only are blacks and Latinx, sorry, more likely to get in trouble for selling and having weed now that, now that it's becoming legal, they're nearly shut out of the industry. So somewhere along the lines, legal weed became a rich white business. Chelsea is a very diverse city, and I think passing this would be a drop in the bucket to addressing that issue, but still a great step to take to right that wrong and create those equal opportunities that Kyle spoke about earlier. Thank you.
Good evening. So could I make a few other statements before, because you said it was solely for? Okay, so first, I want to just acknowledge the city manager and the well-deserved recognition. And I too agree the utmost, and we celebrated you and all of you last week at Black History Month grand finale, and it was a community celebration. So congratulations, and I ditto everything that was said on your behalf. I also want to say, I also want to acknowledge Brandon, who was on the youth commission that spoke several weeks ago, and I wasn't here, but I understood that, you know, he walked away hurt. So I just want to reiterate that as a volunteer and as a youth in our community, he's standing up to advocate for issues that concern the youth. So us as adults, who he looks up to, he's kind of like an apprentice, and we're his mentors. So just to encourage him to speak up, to say what's on his mind, but also to call him and say, "Oh, sorry, can't..."
If I may, I would say, just, you can come up during the public speaking portion and discuss those items. This portion of the meeting is just on zoning.
Oh, okay, all right. So, okay, sorry about that. So my name is Joan Cromwell. I live at Thirty-Eighth Addison Street. And I am here in support of Councilor President Avi Janeda's rezoning package, in particular, the rezoning of the downtown district. I echo his sentiment of seeing the proposal as tidying up something that should have been done a long time ago. The barriers caused by the current zoning ordinance prevent churches, restaurants, and cannabis dispensaries from operating in locations that are predominantly set up for commercial use. You all were on deck with the approval to revitalize our downtown area with the goal to become more welcoming and prosperous, where everyone, everyone feels welcome. This revitalization project called Chelsea Prosperous includes using community policing model, special events, pop-up food and activities, as well as Chelsea Lunch Marketplace. All these incentives are the right ingredient to a thriving downtown area. But we need to also address equity inclusion and strong locally-owned business in the area of disproportionate impact. It is time to create wealth for our people and our community that has been disproportionately affected in the war on drugs. A yes vote allows you to continue the willingness to help create clear ground rules for those seeking licenses and help to promote our own residents in our BIPOC community, residents who continue to selfishly contribute to this community. A yes vote provides the same opportunity for our own residents to apply as an equity licensee, as was provided for three Cambridge residents, partners coming into our community. A prosperous business mogul, a first Latino vice president, vice mayor, and an affluent attorney. They noted everyone was helpful, from the city solicitor, to the planning board, to the police. We hope the same standards and sentiments hold true. A yes vote voices the same message of opportunity for our residents who live, volunteer, and want to invest in their home community. A yes vote allows our community to turn this industry around to where it reflects individuals who live in this city, the city they call home. How many dispensary owners are from minority communities? It is time to dispel the negative connotation marijuana has in BIPOC communities as opposed to being widely accepted and lucrative in white communities. Also, how do we, as a BIPOC community, address social equity and the disparities in the cannabis rollout? Dispensaries can help neighborhoods like ours.
Thirty seconds.
Okay, in terms of putting back in the community where it is very well deserved. I leave you with the words from our leader of the Downtown Area Revitalization Project, Mimi Graney. The revitalization of the downtown area is modeled on the approach for community-based on economic revitalization, which is a proven success in business districts across the country. So let us revitalize the downtown area with catalytic development, allowing for invested equity capital in a clinically-dead downtown. I am requesting a unanimous vote yes. Thank you.
Mr. President, Tom Emmerich, senior city manager, I'm here to advocate in favor of all three of the specific zoning changes that are before you tonight for public hearing, the marijuana retail and other marijuana-related changes that are before you. I think those serve the best interest of our residents. The change in the parcels near Revere Beach Parkway in the Prattville area are also in the city's best interest. And I strongly support the changes associated with the municipal harbor plan, the municipal harbor plan zoning that has been thoroughly vetted publicly, not just in a lengthy public hearing before the planning board, but in two lengthy council subcommittee meetings and in public forums, including public forums with stakeholders at Green Roots. I do want to also talk for a moment or two about the proposals that are also before you that involve density. Those were presented by me, and while I have tremendous respect for the speakers before me from Green Roots, I just need to offer a different perspective on this. So there's no question, no one disagrees, we have a serious housing crisis in this community. And there are many tools to try to help ameliorate that crisis. But one tool that can't be done, but you can't solve the problem without, is the tool of creating more housing. You cannot solve a housing crisis without building more housing units. That is just a simple truth. And this proposed package of density changes that is before you attempts to do, to allow the city to do just that, to build more housing, not just in the region, but right here in Chelsea. But I want to point out that I'm not proposing some comprehensive restatement of our zoning ordinances. These density proposals, in particular, the ones that involve the R one and the R two district, are modest, modest proposals. They are not radical in any way, shape, or form. In fact, I think some, a legitimate critic could say, given the serious nature of the housing crisis here in Chelsea, they are way too modest. Nonetheless, they are relatively minor changes, so let me point them out to you. In the R one district, the district that encompasses Prattville and Soldiers Home, my proposal is narrowly focused on a very small number of parcels that exist between six thousand square feet and seventy-five hundred square feet. Now, it might, it's hard to imagine what that means in square-footed size. All I can tell you is the overwhelming, overwhelming majority of houses that currently exist in that R one district are built on lots that are less, less than six thousand square feet. In fact, if the current zoning that exists right now, which prevents building on parcels under seventy-five hundred square feet, had been in existence in this city for the last hundred years, there'd be virtually no houses built in the city because most lots in the city are under six thousand square feet, let alone under seventy-five hundred. For a city with this kind of housing crisis, to prohibit someone with a lot size of seventy-four hundred square feet, which is a huge lot size for an urban community like Chelsea, huge for every surrounding community around us, to not allow anything, even a single family, to be built on a parcel that, that size, it makes no sense. That's the effort I'm trying to fix in the R one district. My proposal would simply reduce the required lot size for building in the R one from seventy-five hundred square feet to six thousand square feet, still larger than the overwhelming majority of lots that are currently built upon in that district. You can build a good family home on six thousand square feet and have plenty, plenty of open space. I lived, when I was first married, lived, bought a two-family in Revere on a lot that was four thousand square feet, a two-family home, and we had plenty of backyard space because even that lot was big, but a six-thousand-square-foot lot gives adequate opportunity for open space. And not, having zoning that prohibits you to build any unit on a six-thousand-square-foot lot in a city with this kind of housing problem makes no sense to me. And I'm asking to fix that in the R one district. In the R two district, I'm asking for a little more density than currently exists. So I'm going to give two quick examples, and then I'm done. Under the current zoning that exists in the R two district, if you have a five-thousand-square-foot lot, you can build by right one unit, one. Under my radical proposal, you can build two, two units. That's what I'm proposing. Instead of building one unit on a Instead of building one unit on a 5,000 square foot lot, I'm advocating at least allow people to build two units. And on a 7,500 square foot lot in the R2 district, lots that are extremely large, larger than most lots in the city, right now currently by right in the R2 district in a 7,500 square foot lot, you can build two units. Under my proposal, I would allow you by right to build three units, and if you then got a special permit, you could build one additional unit, four units on a 7,500 square foot lot. That's what my proposal does. That is not radical. That, to me, is reasonable in a city that has a major housing crisis. So I would ask you to consider approving these minor zoning changes. Thank you.
I'll ask one more time if there's anyone here tonight that would like to make any public comment on zoning issues alone, solely zoning at this time. Please state your name and your address.
Vladimir Samuel, 186 Chester Avenue, Chelsea. I'm here in favor of the zoning amendments for the marijuana establishments. I myself am a social equity, as well as economic empowerment certification holder from the Cannabis Commission. Chelsea was my first choice, but because of the zoning, I just, I had to go. I'm right now opening in Cambridge, and they were far more friendly. The 500-foot buffer in Chelsea was just too much. I mean, Cambridge is a larger city, and the buffer is only 300 feet. If I was, I felt deterred almost to open in Chelsea, and this was where I am from here, and I'd love to, I have the means to create jobs for other Chelsea residents, and I just felt as though I couldn't even find a place. Anywhere I stand in Chelsea is 500 feet from a school or a park, and I think opening up the downtown area would do so much for the city of Chelsea itself. That's all I wanted to say.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I didn't see the speakers continuing to grab their marijuana establishment chairs and pass this to the other speakers coming. I don't want folks to put us out there that they got COVID in City Hall, so apologize. Okay.
How you doing? My name's Andre Joseph, and I live at 150 Heard Street. I'm here to support the, support the zoning amendment for marijuana establishments. So, 80% of the people in federal prisons and 60% of the people in state prisons arrested on drug offenses are Black or Latinx, and now that marijuana has been legalized, we're seeing the ownership skew in the other direction, so I think we just need to fix that. Thank you.
My name is Beverly Martin Ross. I live at 229 Washington Avenue, Chelsea, Mass. I am also supporting the zoning amendment for marijuana establishment. I remember back in the day, they said, they would say, "Upward hope, downward dope," right? So I'm here to support it because I know so many, so, so many Black and Native Americans are most likely to be killed, to be killed by the law enforcement. And I, and I also know that they have been due to just a small little marijuana package. And I believe the city of Chelsea has seen its drug-infested, this has been a drug-infested city since I was a kid, and I think it's time that we take a stand and make some dispensaries that are legal, where our people can go and purchase, our, our people of color, our Latinos, our African-Americans, our Native Americans can go and purchase in their own city some legal marijuana, since it's legal. And I think that it would do a great justice to the city of Chelsea if we did this, to say yes to this amendment in the zoning. And I thank you this evening for having me, and I still say upward hope, downward dope.
Hi, my name is Maria Montgomery. I live at 150 Heard Street, and I am here to support the rezoning of the marijuana establishments. Today, Latinx and Black communities are still subject to wildly disproportionate marijuana enforcement practices, despite the fact that these groups are no more than like, no more likely than white people to use or sell marijuana. We all deserve equal opportunities, and I'm asking the council to, to consider approving this marijuana establishment zoning amendment. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Sandy Sanchez, and I live at 9 Clinton Street, Chelsea. I'm here to support the rezoning of marijuana establishments. Simple marijuana possessions was the fourth most common cause of deportation in any offense in 2013, and the most common cause of deportation for drug law violations. More than, more than 13,000 people were deported in 2012 and 2013 just alone for marijuana possession. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Narey Olivo, and I live at 210 Washington Avenue. I'm also here to support the zoning amendment for marijuana establishments. Since 2010, racial disparities have actually worsened in 31 states, and there are extreme racial disparities with marijuana arrests on Blacks versus Whites, and I feel like this amendment would change that, because then more Black people would get the opportunity to be in a more densely populated area in Chelsea and have better access to people, and even people who don't drive and can't get to further places here in Chelsea. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who'd like to speak on zoning matters?
My name is Celia Alvarez. I live at 100 Heard Street. I'm writing, or I'm speaking right now in support of the zoning amendments for the marijuana establishment. One fact that I have is that three, people of color, Black people, are 3.6 times more likely than white people to be arrested for marijuana despite similar usage rates. Thank you.
Seeing no further speakers, I will now close the public hearing on the zoning amendments. We'll now move on to the next item on our agenda, which is public speaking. I invite anyone who would like to speak to the city council and make a public statement to walk up to the microphone, please state your name and your address. You will be limited to four minutes.
It happens to be a tall.
The first person you moved before, exactly.
Good evening, council. It's good to see everybody in person for a change. It's nice to see things opening up. Many of you I've already spoken to or I've had the chance to meet, but for those.
Please state your name and address.
Yes, I'm sorry. My name is Gary D. Young. I'm from 165 Winterson Street here in Chelsea. I'm the chair of the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Board. You might have noticed that you received a communication from our board regarding the transfer of the property at 41 through 43 Orange Street to allow us to develop more affordable housing. I believe the letter and the request speaks for itself by and large. Many of the speakers who came before me spoke about the need for more affordable housing. This is likely one of the most direct, quickest ways of developing some of it, is to allow us to develop a new structure on that property, and we are excited to do so if we have the opportunity. We also recognize, though, that anytime, anytime we propose to create something new in a city that is dense, where there are a lot of diverging needs and opinions and beliefs about what should happen with, with property on it, that we need to get as many opinions and perspectives as necessary. So we are actively talking about how to reach out to neighbors, how to reach out to the community as a whole, but I also want to take a few minutes tonight to extend that outreach to the council, because we recognize you may have questions about what we plan, you know, how we plan to use the, the property, what we plan to do. You might have, you might be hearing from your constituents, you might have thoughts of your own. We want to hear those upfront. We are very interested in hearing from everybody. We recognize that this is our first developmental property, should it be transferred to us, and we want it to go well. We want the community to have faith in us, we want you to have faith in us, we want to build something that serves the community for a long time. The best way that we can do that is in partnership with you. So I'm going to email, leave my, my contact information. I encourage you to reach out if you do have questions, if you do have thoughts. Of course, anybody in City Hall could probably help you. Alex Train will, I'm sure, is happy to talk with you more. Anybody on the board is happy to talk with you. Finally, I recognize that sometimes these matters are referred to committee, and if that's the case, I also would encourage the committee to be in touch and would hope to have the opportunity to speak with the committee about that as well. So, that's it. Thank you very much, and have a great night.
Hi, my name is Jade Umemba, and I live at 87 Parker Street in Chelsea, and I am up here in regards to the Christopher Columbus statue. So I just want to say that I think that if you're opposed to removing the statue because of its rich history and all the great things that he did, you should take some time to read up on him and learn about all of the atrocities that he committed. I'm not a history teacher, so I won't run down a list of them, but once you do a quick Google search, you'll see that he's not so great, and there's no reason for him to be venerated. There's a reason why people are referring to October 12th as Indigenous Peoples' Day instead. I just think that if someone presents an issue to you, instead of blocking out the idea to take it as an opportunity to start a discussion and find out why it's problematic. They taught us that Christopher Columbus was a good guy in school, but they didn't teach us that he tortured and murdered thousands of Native peoples, and that he started the Native American slave trade, which morphed into the African slave trade. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Bran Ray Garcia, and I live on 461 Crescent Avenue, and I am a Chelsea youth and a student of Chelsea High School as well, as well as the secretary of the Chelsea Youth Commission, but I am here to speak on my own accord and share my experience of last city council meeting. In the city of Chelsea, we must push forward the experiences of those underrepresented, especially when in a position of privilege such as being white and a city councillor. Yet, last meeting, that was not the case for councillors Recupero and Taylor. Those who are chosen to represent us cannot be those who are unappreciative of the beauty and Latinidad, an ever-changing experience of learning and transformation. Those who do not understand this complexity or even make an attempt to understand this are not fit to lead our city. Councilors Recupero and Taylor have had more than enough time to adjust their eyes to the beauty that is Latinidad, yet they refuse to gaze deeply within the gem that is Chelsea's Latino community and grasp its intricacies. This is very obvious by both respective councillors who chose to vote against the removal of the Columbus statue, as well as making the choice to crudely speak upon the subject of Latinos who were affected by the ultimate effects of the colonialism of Columbus. What was displayed at the last city council meeting was not allyship to the POC community within Chelsea, and any person within our city government that is not an ally for all, whether proving this verbally, with action, or lack of action, are not the best fitted for being a city councillor. In a city where a majority of our parents are undocumented, you would expect there to be extra attention on youth voices as well, as we not only represent the youth perspective, but represent the whole well-being of our families, as our parents cannot speak up through elections. We are the ones who stand up for our families and their experiences, yet both councillors mentioned, mentioned, chose to crudely disregard youth voices in a taunting and unprofessional way. To disagree is one thing. To disregard is a whole other thing. And claim, and to claim they don't know their history to someone who's Latino, especially the POC youth, is not only an act of ageism, but an act of racism. Ultimately, I do not crave an apology from these city councillors. They have made it clear what they believe in and have made it obvious that they do not have the best interests of the many people of color living within our small city, not only through the actions of last meetings, but through the many accounts of Chelsea residents who have all met discriminatory rhetoric from both councillors, especially councillor Recupero. To blatantly bash on Latino youth and all Latinos in general amongst everyone present in the meeting, both in person and virtual, should not be tolerated. However, I do believe repercussions for their actions should be enforced, especially for councillor Recupero, who took it upon himself to come up to me and one other youth, telling us not to forget to change our last names. That is harassment. That is harassment. It is racially insensitive, considering majority of POC Latinos are stuck with their last names, a forever emblazoned symbol of colonialism we're forced to drag with us. I am Afro-Indigenous. I got my last name Garcia through rape, genocide, and colonialism, and slavery, period. That's inappropriate, uncalled for. It should not be tolerated. Ultimately, I would like to leave the city council with the question. Why wasn't the behavior of your fellow members called out earlier? I say this in the most respectful way.
Thirty seconds.
This behavior isn't new, then why did it take two youth of our, of your city to be attacked for there to be change? Our youth, nor any citizen, should not have to experience this. So as glad as I am we're having this discussion, why wasn't holding your fellow members accountable on a large scale happening before? Thank you for your time.
I'm from 147 Essex Street. I'm 33 years old. This is the city that I grew up in, so I'm, I'm gonna pull out a couple of different points from my point of view, this is my opinion on things. First and foremost, it broke my heart hearing that my dad is a white supremacist. That's pretty amusing to me. So my dad is Sicilian descent. He migrated to America through a boat with 20 of his relatives called the Olympia. During, I'm gonna bring up some history. During World War II, which is 1939 to 1945, and I'm a veteran, so I say some of this history because I, I had to learn it, and I liked learning it. There were barbed-wired encircled camps for relocations of more than 10,000 Italian-Americans and restricted more than 600,000 nationwide. Italian-Americans sent to camps stripped of property and put on curfew were seen as a threat to homeland security, being called Daigos, WAPs, and Guineas. I don't know how that fits for white supremacy. Italian-Americans faced prejudice for decades. Italians were the biggest group of immigrants to migrate to America through Ellis Island, which my dad came, came to, for much of the late 19th and early 20th century. Between 1876 and 1930, 15, 5 million Italian-Americans moved to the US, but not without backlash. During these times, they popularized the notion that Italians were a separate race from Anglo-Americans. So I'm not sure how my dad fits into being a white supremacist, especially seeing as I'm Sicilian and Puerto Rican. My mother is Afro-Latina herself. All right, and that, this is another point I want to pick, uh, make up that happens within Massachusetts, the power of accusation. And I bring up a time, in America, our America, Massachusetts, the power of accusation in Massachusetts, the Salem Witch Trials, 1692 to 1693, more than 200 accused, 30 found guilty, 19 who were executed by hanging, 14 women and five men. They were all accused, right? While the accusers gained enough momentous power to actually govern the lynching, people who accused made this possible. The fun fact, though, throughout the turmoil and the pain that these accusers orchestrated, the city of Salem still uses the name witch as their team mascot. I know this has nothing to do with Chelsea, but I'm just showing you the power of accusations. If they could kill someone, defamation of character is a real thing in America. If you can sit behind a screen or stand at home and send a letter and just point out things without knowing someone's history, you could ruin a reputation. And that's why I stand here and I try to defend my dad in that case. There's still teams like Cleveland Indians, they agree to change their name, they think it's insensitive. So there's good and bad with cancel culture, but sometimes when you get someone to gain that momentum and power to point the finger at someone, there's also backlash for that, that they, they themselves never get to feel. Only the, only the person they accuse feel that. They just sit back and, and disappear into history while the person who gets accused has to sit up and defend themselves, the same way the witches tried to defend themselves, and not all of them got away with it. 19 were lynched, it's said. Defamation of character is, is something that this country is using more so often than, than ever. ever. I'm thirty-three years old and I lived here. There's many people on this council that had their character questioned and judged throughout this. Throughout this, stay on the council. My thing is if you guys stand together and you know my dad, then this shouldn't gain any momentum. This should die right on the tracks because I'll tell you one thing, I for one thing have never been taught white supremacy ways or know anything of white supremacy. I have been racist against myself.
Thirty seconds.
I'm here today not to defend my father, but to defend how I was brought up. I'm the number ten out of thirteen children. My father never once taught me to hate or how to judge a man or woman by their race. One thing he did teach me and gave me was the love for history, the want to learn and understand it, to move past it from the wrongs and to learn from the wrongs, but to know that there's better. But to never once use it against anyone, to judge people for who they are and what they stand for, or to show that their culture really is something to look at them for. But I've learned one thing, that you can't please everyone and they will always judge you by what you think and what you've done wrong, even though the good that you have done will far outweigh the bad. I've been home at my parents' house where you see people that I don't even know, strangers, many Hispanic people, African-American, whatever their culture, race, agenda, knock on that door and ask for my dad. My dad never once turns anyone down. And it'll help anyone in this community if they ask him and he has the power to do it. And if you know my dad, then this is true words that I'm saying here, but all I want to say is thank you, the councillors in the city of Chelsea for listening. I'm gonna tell you one thing, we don't stand for white supremacy in the Recupero household. We are the melting pot of America. First and foremost, I am American.
How you doing? My name is Giovanni Recupero Junior. I'm a forty-year resident of one forty-seven Essex Street. I've been here my whole life and it's just, it's just, I mean, it's hard to fathom, you know, that, well, my father is being called, it's really, it's really some hurtful stuff, you know? And I sat down and I tried to write, write something and just, I couldn't, it's hard to find the words to try to express the pain that I feel and the disappointment that I feel that, that my father has to go through this because he's, he's never taught, taught that to me or anyone in my family, you know? So, I mean, dear council members and members of the community, I thank you for the opportunity to be here today. Regarding my father, councillor Giovanni Recupero Senior. My name is Giovanni Recupero Junior, the son of councillor Recupero. I am not here today to defend an opinion on a statue, that's not what I'm here to do. I'm here to defend the character of my father, for which I know to be true. There's been allegations that my father is racist. I'm here today to help you, to help those that do not know my father, understand his background, his history, and allow you to get familiar with his immediate family, such as myself. I stand in front of you as one out of thirteen biracial children that he's raised. My father was born, he was born an immigrant who came to this country from Sicily and I, and my mother is a Latin woman from Puerto Rico. My father served this country defending every race, color, and religion. My father was always welcoming to no matter who I bring to the door, whether they was Asian, whether they was African-American, whether they was white. One thing was evident and it was always clear, we were all treated, they were all treated equally. They always had a plate at my table to eat and they always had a seat at my couch to sit down. My father never turned down anybody. And I have many friends, I've been here for forty years. If you're racist in Chelsea, I mean, you're in the wrong place. You're in the wrong place. So I grew up dealing with racism and it's a touchy situation for me because racism, it's hard to deal with. And sometimes you have to kind of go through it to differentiate what is really racism. And it's a sensitive subject because it's something I've been dealing with my whole life. You know, since a young kid in this city, whether it be law enforcement, whether it be other people in other cities, but I've dealt with it many times. And for my father, and for most people to say that my father is racist, he lived through it through me and he's seen what it did to you. And the thing about racism is, yeah, it hurts you emotionally, but the heart heals. The heart always heals because the heart is kind and it's forgiven. So your heart will heal, but when it messes with you mentally, that's another thing. Racism is a thing, it's so powerful that you can wish to be something that, something other than what you are. You can hate the color that you are, you can hate the heritage that you represent. You can hate just what you see in the mirror every day and wish you were something other than what you are. But what my father told me, and he always said this, is, "Son, be proud of who you are. Be proud of your heritage. Be proud of who your mother is. You're beautiful no matter the color of your skin. No matter what, we are all treated equal." And that's, that's something that's been evident to me. Always present was equality through my father's words and how he never turned anybody down. And he'll never turn anybody down. He'll never turn anybody down.
Thirty seconds.
Because of that, I say to you, to those, and I'm gonna turn around, to those who want to speak about my father in such a way, look at me. Do I look like a creation of a man who is a white supremacist? Do I look like a creation of a man who is racist? I look like that? I've been treated just as bad as you've been treated in your life. Why would my father treat anybody the way as I've been treated to hurt me? Doesn't matter what my father is.
Please refrain from interacting.
Doesn't matter what my father is. My father is first, he's a human being. He's a human being first. He's a human being first, just like anybody else. Everybody's entitled to an opinion. Some opinions get misconstrued along the way. Stories, just like stories, depending who tells the stories, it gets changed.
Ten seconds.
I thank you today for this opportunity to speak. Thank you.
Thank you, Sean.
Please keep, please do not, I'm asking the members in the audience to please keep their comments to self.
Well then, well then, well then. Good evening, city councillors. My name is Kamani James and I am a senior at Boston Line Academy and former student representative on the Boston School Committee.
Did you, I'm sorry, did you say that address?
What happened?
Did you state your address, please, for the record?
My address is twenty Washington Street in Brighton, Mass.
Thank you.
It's really a shame that I had to come here on a Monday night to hold adults accountable, but here we go. When I saw that recording of this council meeting on February twenty-third, I was both grateful to have such thoughtful and powerful voices fighting against racism and white supremacy, but appalled and disgusted by those who spewed hatred and ignorance through their rhetoric supporting a man who committed genocide. I thought to myself, should I come here and give a detailed history lesson about what actually happened in fourteen ninety-two and afterwards, since it's clear that folks don't know what they're talking about? Or should I instead direct my energy into explaining why such remarks should have never and should never be uttered in these halls, especially as elected officials? When discussing taking down the Columbus statue here in Chelsea, Giovanni Recupero and Todd Taylor provided their own arguments and reasoning as to why they were against taking down the statue. Both of them were the only two city council members who voted against taking down the statue. Now, it's okay to have different opinions from others, but it doesn't become okay when your opinions begin to belittle, oppress, and disrespect community members, especially young people. Because when young people are disrespected in one place, they're disrespected everywhere. Christopher Columbus did, in fact, commit genocide. Webster Dictionary defines genocide as, quote, "The deliberate and systematic destruction of a racial, political, or cultural group." And many universities across the world, including academic scholars, have very similar definitions. So to hear Todd Taylor, a city council member, in a city where so many Indigenous and Latino people reside, say that genocide means something completely different and then fail to elaborate, fail to elaborate on what genocide was, saying, quote, "I don't want to wax on about this. It's beyond me." It only shows his argument was incohesive, unclear, and rooted in white supremacist thinking as a white man in society. You could never be a trained historian with your type of mentality and I don't ever want to hear you evoke such ethos. Todd Taylor also mentioned how children were being fed, quote, "radical things in schools" simply because youth came up here and spoke the truth about Columbus. Just because people tell the blunt, honest truth about history doesn't make them radical and make them truth-tellers. Put simply, I don't ever want anyone fixing their mouths to say such baseless, oppressive, racist things, period. Now to Giovanni, where do I even start? From saying things like erasing your history to get rid of your last name is abhorrent and I'm honestly surprised to even still see you here before me. Your remarks were absolutely disgusting and insensitive to Latina individuals, period. I don't care who your children are, I don't care whose kids are in the room. Anyone who has connections with the city councillors I'm speaking about has bias, period. Contextualization does not excuse immorality. It's sounding very much like, well, he has a black wife or he has black kids, so he can't be racist. Cancel culture this, cancel culture that. White people can't speak about cancel culture and how it works. Just because these people raise you a certain way doesn't mean they can't be racist. What's going on? What is going on? There's always going to be privilege, white fragility, and racial bias as a white man in this country that can be passed down to your children of color and manifest into self-hate. Hello, are you the only one that's been reading around here? I can't, I can just continue to debunk all night the crazy arguments that I heard, not only tonight.
Thirty seconds.
But at the other city council hearing. Attacking youth is unacceptable. Kudos to my friend Brandon for speaking truths to power and calling out harassment because it just couldn't have been me. Let anyone have approached me after this meeting and we simply would have had to scrap, especially white folks that even find it okay to approach people of color. If you're upset about the truth, take that up with God. I need these two city councillors to resign.
Before I begin, I requested if I could be given six minutes due to my speech impediment in order to finish my speech. I don't know who I emailed in that chain, but I want to know if my request will be honored tonight.
You are, you will be given six minutes due to your request.
Thank you. My name is Charlie and I'm a current senior at an exam school back in Boston at twenty-three Washington Street. Since childhood, I have been told that Christopher Columbus is who founded my ancestors' land and he is the reason why my people today are even a thing. Since childhood, I was told to believe that an Italian man with the brain the size of a peanut should be given the respect he deserves because he raped, slaughtered, and drowned my ancestors out. Because of Christopher Columbus, tribes and a whole race of people were wiped out. I will never be able to learn about my ancestors' language, their culture, beliefs, and et cetera to the same full extent that a white man would be able to learn about their own European ancestry that they can date centuries back. You should be ashamed of what you said at the last meeting. Being Hispanic has a complex devastating history for many Caribbean's who are stripped of their true culture, including me. As an Italian, your comments about Christopher Colon is entirely invalid, entirely invalid. Your bias is rooted in racism and as if your white hero Christopher should be recognized for silencing my people. Be careful of your words next time and I pass that advice to your sons as well. It is not my duty as a seventeen-year-old woman to explain to two grown men, one who thinks is a trained historian, about the history of Christopher Columbus and whether it's debatable that Christopher was a good man for discovering something that already exists beyond his understanding. I will simply say that not once have I ever seen a Hitler statue in America nor in any other country. I have never seen a statue commemorating this man for slaughtering millions of Jews. Christopher Colon does not deserve to be commemorated through a statue for his crimes. Well, he deserves us to be destroyed and it is time we tell each other the truth about Christopher and the type of trauma he has left. Never should you open your mouth again, Recupero, to tell Brandon, Richard, or any other student or any other person of that matter to embrace a part of history that includes racism, rape, slaughter, and the genocide of our people. Never shall you open your mouth to spew such nonsense as a phenotypic white Italian in today's society. I'm gonna need you to apologize to both of their families, including the city councillor Damali, along with others in the entire Chelsea community. Please, check your morals and come correct the next time you want to speak on any matters that apparently matter to you. No one cares if a large part of Chelsea community wasn't aware of the statue existing. It's the fact that it's existing, period. It illustrates a time in history where we were okay with highlighting the genocide and racism that Christopher Columbus committed. Christopher Colon is a symbol of white supremacy and the man who viewed my people as demons for simply living freely and being kissed by the sun. You are not understanding that if we kept a statue of Christopher standing, it would have given the message of such acceptance to racism and white supremacy. It would have illustrated the ignorance that many Chelsea community members live under and it only highlights your very own ignorance as a white male. We tell the story of Hitler without a statue, we condemn that man without a statue. Why can't we do the same with Christopher Columbus and his slaughter of Indigenous people? We are not changing history. Excuse me. We are not changing history, we are simply learning it with truth and ensuring that we are not glorifying such a disgusting man. You say that you didn't necessarily care, but you truly cared so deeply that you felt the need to harass the two students in telling them to change their last names. You felt that it was appropriate to tell students who have possibly experienced an ancestral history of genocide and the erasure of their culture to change their names. Do you have any idea how harmful that was for you to do? It is so evil for you to tell them to go back and change their last names when their history has been erased. Do you understand? Erased. I don't even know what our last names sound like, what it's spelled like, what it looks like. I don't even know how to form a sentence in our Indigenous language. You ought to be ashamed of yourself. I want you to reflect, excuse me, I want you to reflect. What does that say about you to have students from a whole other city to address your blatant disrespect? What does it mean for you to feel so entitled to speak about Christopher Columbus in such a boisterous way? I would love for the trained historian, who I believe is named Todd Taylor, to enlighten you, but it is clear that they only know so little and not a thing when it comes to Black, Caribbean, or Indigenous people. I yield my time.
Hello, everyone. My name is Arjane. I live at nineteen sixteen Dorchester Avenue in Boston and I've come to make a few things clear. First, I want to start off by saying Giovanni, you need to apologize for teaching your children to hate themselves. Secondly, no one with an Italian last name from their prejudiced father should be talking. To insinuate that being Italian exempts you from racism is obtuse and ignorant. This is really sad. You reference Columbus as if he is some god when he was really a greedy charlatan with the white savior complex. Their ancestors did not deserve what they received. Your statements at the last meeting were unacceptable and warranted resignation as it has become abundantly clear that you lack empathetic metacognitive skills. That makes you unfit to do what is best for a city made up almost entirely of people of color. I cherish today your wife, kids, and this city finally make the choice to get rid of you. And as for Thanksgiving, anyone who has not purposefully drawn out the voices of Indigenous people would know that the concept has been disputed for years. You need to get more educated after you resign. Not every figure in history deserves a statue because those are meant to commemorate people that have made positive contributions to society. Keeping it up would have sent the wrong message to people. You are for reinforcing racism and perpetuating a system that is not nurturing to us. As the city councillor, it is your duty to listen to your constituents and do what they say is best for their mental health. The way you address two taxpaying youth leaders exemplifies how inadequate your boundaries and morals are. You should never speak on anyone's child. You need to apologize to them and their parents directly. And Todd also needs to go. He was so worried about the power of the white man's narrative that he was trying to undermine the power of the people, the ones that the statue actually affect. The last thing that people of color need is a white man telling us how to react or what will make us feel better. In regards to the radical point of view that kids are fed, if your generation had gotten more education, maybe you would have never fixed your mouth to insult your constituents in blatant, with your blatant ignorance, um, with your blatant ignorance and condescending comments. You've embraced yourself, you've embarrassed yourself and should be ashamed. You are not a voice for good. You both contribute to keeping people in a harmful past that was never friendly or nurturing for my people. Taxpayers and people in general do not deserve people like you in power. I yield my time.
Individuals only asked, you have four minutes and you're allowed to speak once.
Hi, I just wanted to briefly say that it's disappointing tonight to hear all of this
Hi, I just wanted to briefly say that, um, it's disappointing tonight to hear all of this, because here we are in Chelsea, Massachusetts. The majority, it's a bi-park community. So we here are having, um, issues that we look at a national level, that's happening in the deep down south in Louisiana, and folks, places like that. This should not be a conversation here and now. So I do just want to say that slave owners had black babies, but they were still white supremists. So know that. Not that I've, not that I believe Mr. Recupero or Mr. Taylor are white supremists. I do not believe that. But I do want to leave with this, to say, watch your thoughts. Watch your thoughts, they become your words. Watch your words, they become your actions. Watch your actions, they become a habit. Watch your habits, they become a character. Watch your character, it becomes your destiny. So if we all just keep that in mind, and again, I reiterate, I don't believe Mr. Recupero is a white supremacist. We've had hard discussions, and he comes the way he comes. But sometimes, as I just said by loud and clear, just walk away with that and, and remember that, because what you say is very impressionable. And you as a leader in our community, as well as Mr. Taylor, what you say is impressionable, especially to our youth. I respect all of you, I respect you, and I want to reiterate, I do not believe you're a white supremacist. Thank you.
Seeing no further speakers, we'll now move on to the next portion of our meeting. Oh, um, we have, that'll be part, that'll be part of the communications. We'll do that as part of communications. I'll accept it. There are, there are emails that we have received, and I'll enter them as communications. Not as the public. Correct, so it'll just be as, um, right as, as communications. Um, we're moving on to item number six, which is the approval of the minutes, regular minutes of February twenty-second, twenty-twenty-one. Do I have a motion from the floor? Councillor Lopez asks that we adopt the minutes from our February twenty-second meeting under suspension. Seeing no objection, that is moved. We'll now move through communications from the city manager. First communication received from city manager Tom Ambrosino regards to reappointments to the boards and commissions. Dear councillors, pursuant to section four-two of the Charter of the City of Chelsea, I'm writing to recommend the following individuals to the boards and commissions in the city. For the appointment to the Board of Trustees of the Library, Ms. Lisa Maranikolas from one-fifteen Orange Street. For the appointment to the Board of Registurers, of Voters, Mr. John J. Connors Jr., eleven Lawrence Street. For the appointment to the Council on Elder Affairs, Ms. Florde Alberta Geraldo, two-fifty Congress Ave. For the appointment to the Historical Commission, Mr. Alex Avezza, eighty-nine Orange Street. For the appointment to Historical Commission, Mr. Jossel Resnick, two-twenty-nine Ocean Street Lynn, Massachusetts. To complete the unexpired term of Mr. Alan Marangello, who resigned. The term expires on October twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-one. For the appointment to the Planning Board, Ms. Jessica Avezza, eighty-nine Orange Street, to complete the unexpired term of Sarah Amrin, who has resigned. I respectfully request your approval to these appointments on a waiver of residency for Mr. Resnick. Copies of the resumes are attached. Councillor Robinson. Objections? The appointments, the communication, uh, has been moved to a second reading per our rules. We have a communication received from city manager Tom Ambrosino regards to Chelsea Housing Legal Clinic.
Chelsea Housing Legal Clinic, dear councillors, in response to the recent city council order, I have attached a memorandum for Chelsea Legal Services, Inc., providing information on the Chelsea Housing Legal Clinic, including the number of both court and non-court cases accepted and resolved.
What is wish of the council? There are no objections. Seeing no objection, that motion passes. We have a communication from the city manager regards to the grant from United Way for Chelsea Eat Food Debit Program. Dear councillors, the United Way of Massachusetts Bay and Mary Beck Valley has awarded the city another grant for support of the Chelsea Eat Food Debit Card Program. This grant, in the amount of four-hundred-and-sixty-five thousand dollars, will allow the city to extend the debit card program for a fifth month. A copy of the letter is attached, according to MGL forty-four, section fifty-three A. I'm requesting the city council to formally approve the acceptance of this grant. A draft order is attached. Councillor Robinson?
Accept and file a communication under suspension. Something will be coming up on the new business.
Next communication is a communication from Tom Ambrosino regards to the notice of residency waiver.
Dear councillors, I am writing to notify you of my intention to grant a residence waiver to DBW employee Giovanna Recupero. Mr. Recupero is moving to East Boston in order to care for elderly family member. Mr. Recupero is a valued member of the DPW whom we wish to retain. And according to what the administrative code, part four, section one-twelve point oh-two, I request that you provide me with any comments on this proposed waiver within seven days.
Councillor Robinson? Do you have a motion?
Accept and file.
Accept and file?
Accept and file a communication under suspension, if there are no objections.
We have a communication from city manager Tom Ambrosino regards to the approval of pay prior year expenses. Dear councillors, I am writing again for your approval to, for prior year invoices. The first situation involves invoices for ISD for emergency board-up services. Unfortunately, these invoices were delivered to former ISD employee Frank Henry, now at the School Department. This caused substantial delay in processing. The total amount is three-thousand-three-hundred-fifteen dollars. Second situation involves an old invoice from Market Basket for Food from last year's employee health fare. That invoice was one-hundred-and-twenty-seven dollars and seventy-three cents. In each case, the responsible department has sufficient funds in its FY twenty-one budget to pay the bills. No new funds are required. The only action is necessary is this council approval to make the payments. Draft orders of the payment of these bills are attached.
Accept and file a communication under suspension. Will be something coming up on the new business?
Councillor Robinson asks that we accept and file under suspension, so moved. We have a communication received from the city manager in regards to the request for appropriation of overlay surplus to the Assessors Department. Dear councillors, I am writing to request that the city council approve a transfer of funds totaling one-hundred-and-twenty-six thousand dollars from the overlay surplus account to Assessors Department in order to cover the cost of an expert review of the city's assessment of multifamily units for plus residential apartments. As you may recall, at the time of setting the FY twenty-one tax rate, I committed to an outside expert to review the city's valuation of our multi-unit residential apartment buildings in order to address concerns that such values are inaccurate. The response to an RFP for this purpose, the city awarded a contract to J.F. Ryan Associates Incorporated. The principal and project manager, Mr. John Ryan, is a recognized expert in the field. A copy of his resume is attached. The Board of Assessors has determined that it has one-hundred-and-twenty-six thousand dollars in surplus in its overlay reserve account. For your information, the overlay reserve account is the account from which the assessors pay, among other items, tax exemption and tax refunds resulting from overevaluations. Assessors, the assessors currently have more money in the overlay reserve account than is required for these payments. Pursuant to MGL chapter fifty-nine subsection twenty-five, the Board of Assessors has the authora, has authorized the transfer of one-hundred-and-twenty-six thousand dollars from that overlay reserve account to the overlay surplus account. Utilizing the funds in the overlay surplus account for J.F. Ryan contract means the city council will not need to appropriate any new funds. To accomplish that, to accomplish this end, I respectfully ask the city council to appropriate the one-hundred-and-twenty-six thousand dollars in overlay surplus to appraisal services line item within this Assessors Department FY twenty-one budget. I've attached the recommended order for this purpose. Councillor Robinson?
Accept and file is communication under suspension. There'll be something coming up on the new business, and at that time, we'd move it to a conference.
Seeing no objection, that motion is moved. We have a communication from Ms. Alana Asher and her students. City councillors, my name is Alana Asher, and I have been an American history teacher to, at Chelsea High School for over fifteen years now. I'd first like to thank you for your work to improve the city of Chelsea. It is difficult job at the best times, it is, this is far from the best times. I'm especially grateful for you to take the time to listen to my students. They were an issue that I was very passionate about, and they were honored to be present to you. The two honors, the two students that presented were Brandon Garcia, who has been on the youth commission since ninth grade, and Richard Flores, class vice president and student athlete. During the council discussion before the vote, some of the comments did not address the proposal itself, but were personal attacks against the presenters. I can only imagine that they were designed to humiliate my students and silence future discourse. More disgraceful were the words of city councillor Recupero at, after the presentation. To be frank, I, in the rest of Chelsea, expect more from this council. City councillor Recupero found Brandon after presentation and told him he should change his last name. That because of his position they advocated for, they no longer had a right to their family histories. Brandon asked city councillor Recupero to please stop. City councillor Recupero did not. City councillor Recupero continued to press Brandon until he was scared and on the verge of tears. Then city councillor Recupero said the same thing to Richard. I believe city councillor's, Recupero's conduct would have continued, but their rides arrived. When Richard and Brandon spoke, they were not only speaking for themselves. Brandon spoke for the youth commission, Richard spoke for fellow high school students. The day after the presentation, during my advanced placement U.S. history class, a student asked if she could, if she should feel humiliated. This is one of the students Richard was speaking for. Having watched the event on Facebook Live and heard what city councillor Recupero did afterwards, she felt disgraced. I hope the future discourse in this council will be more civil. I am extremely proud of how Richard and Brandon conducted themselves. As is proper, they came from the beginning of the meeting, and they were quiet when others had the floor. When it was their turn to speak, they were respectful and mature. They even stayed for the entire meeting, which is something that very few people do. I understand that listening to the opposing viewpoint can be upsetting. But if one launches personal attacks at a seventeen-year-old who voiced their opinion, I question whether they should be a city councillor. I hope the city councillor Recupero wants to do better and that he did not intend to stop youth participation in future city council meetings. Regardless of his intent, his actions made accused question whether it's safe to express their opinion. This is why I want an investigation to, into the conduct of city councillor Recupero for his actions on February twenty-second, twenty-twenty-one. I want to end by being thankful to the council and city manager. I know that you work consistently, constantly to improve the city and have been fighting for Chelsea during the pandemic. I appreciate your time and attention. Alana Asher, ten Museum Way Apartment, nope, sorry, Cambridge, Mass. Councillor Garcia?
Um, I make a motion to accept and file this communication. I would also make a motion to send this to our city solicitor, potentially to open up an investigation.
Okay. The motion is to send the communication to, uh, the city solicitor. Is there any objection? You object? We have an objection to do this on the, um, on the suspension, so we would need a roll call vote. We need a roll call vote. A roll call vote to send this communication to, um, our city solicitors to see if this warrants a sort of investigation. Clerk, a call, roll. If the, if you say yes, then this communication will be sent to the city solicitor to determine whether or not a, an investigation, uh, is, this, it, this letter warrants a investigation.
Councillor Vido?
Wait, I'm sorry, I have a question.
Yes, Councillor Vido?
I'm sorry, I'm sick with COVID. I don't know that this is a decision that we need to make. I feel uncomfortable making this judgment about a colleague. I don't know that this is necessarily the route to go. I urge anyone that has an issue to go to the city solicitor, but I don't feel comfortable making a decision about a colleague. I don't think that it's my place to do so.
I would suggest that anyone who has any reservations about this having a, a, being a, requiring an investigation, to simply vote no, and then we can discuss afterwards other means. But if you feel that this communication does not warrant an investigation at this time, I would simply vote no to the councillor Garcia's motion, and then there'll be other manners to go forward.
Councillor Vido?
No.
Councillor Zaneta?
No.
Councillor Recupero?
No.
Councillor Garcia?
Yes.
Councillor Vega Maldonado? Councillor Robinson?
No.
Councillor Rodriguez?
No.
Councillor Taylor?
No.
Councillor Lopez?
No.
Councillor Brown?
No.
Councillor Zabat?
Yes. Excuse me.
Councillor Vega, I'm sorry, Councillor Vega Maldonado? Did you want to be noted, a yes or a no? A yes would send the communication to our city solicitor to see if this warrants an investigation. A no would just be to accept and fire the communication.
So, okay.
Councillor Vido, if you missed it earlier, raised the question of whether or not this is the proper path for an investigation if it's launched based on the details that we have heard so far. If you have any reservations of whether or not this deserves, based on the facts provided to the council at this time, to warrant an investigation started by the city solicitor, or if there may be other methods to address it, then you can vote no. If you feel that it should warrant an investigation at this time, or at least get a response from the city solicitor, you can vote yes.
Okay, um, I just think we need more information, so I would say no.
No. Okay, two in favor and, uh, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, opposed.
Communication is then accepted and filed. Councillor Brown?
Can we send this to conference so we can get information? Because I believe some of our colleagues would have more questions to be answered, and I think it's fair to the, um, the young man, and also to the person that's in question to have, at least to have a conversation.
Well, if, if we go, if we want to send one of the other communications that are on the same subject matter, this one has already been accepted and filed. But if there's another communication which is coming up with the same subject matter, and you want to send that to, um, conference, then you can feel free, but I might, I must also, uh, inform you that any of these sort of conferences would have to be held in executive session. So, um...
Well, that's why I think it's warrant. I, I, I'm sorry, can you just talk to me just a bit about the next communication that have the same implication?
Okay, I will, I will, I'll read the next communication, and if you want to send that to conference, or if councillor Garcia wants to send this to conference, then we may do that. We have a communication from Karen Meradiaga Mendoza. Dear city council, I request for councillor Giovanni Recupero and councillor Todd Taylor to be held accountable for insensitive response they gave during the most recent meeting regarding the removal of the Christopher Columbus statue. Quotes from both city members, Indians, by Recupero, embrace your past, by Recupero. Our kids are being fed a certain point of view, by Taylor. This is all political, by councillor Taylor. Might as well wipe out every Hispanic last name you have, you don't exist, by Recupero. And your assessors didn't exist, by Recupero. You're only erasing your own heritage, by Recupero. Sincerely, Karen Meradiaga. Councillor Garcia?
I make a motion to accept and file, to send this to our city solicitor, and I wish to speak on it briefly, please. Can I speak on the matter?
It's the same motion as before, or do you want to send to conference?
I want the same motion as before.
Okay.
Can I speak on it?
She wants the city to send the communications to, oh, simply send the communication to...
Send it to the city solicitor.
To the city solicitor.
May I speak on it?
You may speak on it.
Thank you, Mr. President. So I, so this is what I will say. It takes an incredible amount of courage to stand here and speak on any matter, regardless if it's a civil rights matter, regardless if you're advocating for us to hire a new chief for diversity, equity, and inclusion, regardless if you're here for environmental justice, regardless if you're here for affordable housing, whatever the matter is, it takes an enormous amount of... And I cannot imagine how it feels to be a youth leader, show up here to state your opinion. I do not know what happened during that meeting. I have no idea what hap, all I know is what happened while I was here and what I presensed while I was here. I respect the opinions of my colleagues, I respect the opinions of my colleagues, but also of the, of the residents that come here and speak. And I think you have all been witnesses of the incredible grassroots efforts of our youth, as well as inviting other students, other leaders from other cities that took the time to come from Dorchester, from Boston, from Cambridge, to stand alongside our kids. So it's a shame that my colleagues right now are not voting in favor to send this to our city solicitor to potentially open an investigation. The fact that you're stopping this at its tracks is unfortunate, because many of you have advocated so much for diversity, equity, inclusion, you fought so much, you walked the streets to march. But one of your constituents, actually several of your constituents, have taken the time to stand here and tell you, hey, I felt harassed by one of your colleagues, and none of you takes the moment to say, hey, how about we send this to our city solicitor to have a greater understanding of what happened, to potentially open an investigation? Two minutes ago, you voted no to do that. I'm giving you the opportunity to vote yes, and to send this to the city solicitor and see if we should open an investigation. Stand by what you speak for. The fact that only two of us voted in favor for that is appalling, is disheartening. Don't claim that you're supporting the larger conversation that's going on in the United States of America and not take a stand right now locally, because you're afraid that you're going to hurt a colleague's feelings. That's shameful. That's a disservice to the students, to the youth, that many of you claim that you want to give power and voice to. So you have the unique opportunity to do that now. I really do hope that you vote in favor of sending this to the city solicitor and not silence the voices of our youth. It's hard enough to be a teacher, it's hard enough to be a teacher who encourages the youth to be a part of this democratic process, to be civically engaged. Every year, I hear all of you guys talk about how there's lack of civic engagement. Do you think kids want to be civically engaged if they're going to be harassed outside in our hallways? I don't know if that's true, but I at least want to give the opportunity to these kids to be heard, for an investigation to go through. This is not that I'm against my colleague, it's because there's always two sides to a story, and let's have someone else open up this conversation and see if this merits an investigation. That's all I'm asking. We're not sentencing our colleague. We're saying, let's give these kids the opportunity to be heard, not silenced. It's sad that these kids have to show up today to tell us how to behave like adults. Okay? So, all I want to say is, everyone's entitled to their opinion, and you might not agree with their opinion. There's been many occasions, I've been a city councillor, I started as a city councilwoman at twenty-three, and there was one thing I learned. I might disagree with you guys on the floor, but I am not going to disrespect you outside in the hallway. That's not the sort of leader I want to be. So, here's an opportunity, guys, there's plenty of opportunities, I'm going to keep bringing it up. There's three more communications, asking you to please listen to your constituents. So I'll bring it up again, you choose where you stand. Thank you.
Mr. President.
Consular Brown. Consular Brown.
Thank you, Mr. President. First of all, I appreciate the passionate speech by my colleague, but I think a lot of the colleagues here, and I speak for myself, I think we kind of was unsure what was going on. One thing is normally what we do, if we do find that something needs to go before the city manager or the city solicitor, we have a discussion, an early discussion. Not that we judge and jury, that we get more information from both sides, we invite both sides to come and to speak, and sometime when it's an executive session, it could be one side come one hour, the other side come the other hour. But we get an idea if we, this is out of our hands, to rush to judgment is not something that we normally do. That's not how we do the discourse here at this office. But I, I felt that I honestly made a mistake by not, because of where we are now. If the only way that we can get this looked at by our city solicitor, then I'm voting for this to go to our city solicitor, to find out what happened and what's our next step to, and by the way, with all due respect and to my colleague, he should not be voting. I think he was here earlier, so I'm not sure if he voted, but I don't think he should be voting on this matter. And I just think that, you know, this came out of, that's why I asked the question, can we send it to conference, to find out, okay, this young man, we all have praised him, Brandon, I send him letters thanking him for his service, thanking him for his dedication over the years. We all praise these guys, we want these folks to engage, we appreciate every time they come up, Brandon and the young man who was here last week. It's no attack, but we still have to know what we are doing before we rush to judgment. And I will be voting in favor of this if we can't get our city council members to find out what we need to do to make sure these allegations, which are very, very harsh allegations, to be looked into. We've heard both sides, we've heard family members, and we've heard the youth here today. But we need to know what we legally need to do and what we legally can do. So I'll be voting yes to make sure our city solicitor get this, if we can't get the support of our council members to get it to subcommittee. Thank you.
And Consular Avellaneda.
Thank you, Mrs. Vice President. First of all, to Consular Brown's concern about the presence of Consular Recupero is which why I had instructed him to leave the room. So I understand that he was not supposed to be voting, and again, appreciate our legal counsel gives us the sound advice. I didn't appreciate the comments by our vice president tonight. I didn't appreciate the fact that she's telling her colleagues that we don't know what we're doing up here, or that I'm not appreciated, appreciative of the effort of the youth who come here and speak. I encourage civic engagement, all ages, doesn't matter, anyone. And I'm not discounting what had happened, but upon immediately being informed of what had happened, I had already been in contact with a city solicitor. I had already been in contact with our clerk. I know the rules. So when someone states that maybe we don't know the rules and what can be done, that's not fair. I did my work, and as council president, I know exactly what the council can and cannot There is no action based on what was written to us, or any action that the city solicitor does, that would change anything from that gentleman sitting there. Nothing. Was it wrong for him to leave this building and approach a couple of youth and engage in them in a, in a, in a discussion, heated or not? Absolutely, I wouldn't do it. Absolutely. If there's an investigation that needs to happen, if according to the testimony given by the, the young man who came to speak and says he felt harassed, that is criminal if he wants to, and he needs to go to the police department and make a claim, file a report, if that's what happened. It is not within the jurisdiction of this body to go and investigate. It is not. And had my colleague done the research, spoken to our legal counsel, then she would be informing that versus attacking this body. It's not, no investigation is going to happen. The, the actions of doing so and engaging in youth in that way, there are political ramifications for that. Hell, okay, you know, go ahead. That's what you do for making public comments and so, you pay the political price. But if there's anything that's criminal, well then there's a completely different side of this, and that needs to be taken by a police department. No investigation, no examination of this is going to change, and if you knew that what power this body has, then you would not be making this grandiose statement that we don't care about the participation of our youth. Don't dare do that. Come from a, a position of knowledge of what this body can and cannot do. And I'm not about to go down a rabbit's hole and waste this council's time on an ending that I already know. Not because I don't want to investigate it, because I already know what the outcome is going to be. We don't have power. We have none from what happened. So why am I going to, I'm not trying to fluff the story up, but I'm going to tell the young man, this is serious. I'm sorry this gentleman did that. You need to go down to the police department if you feel threatened, harassed. Otherwise, the ballot box is where you can punish this gentleman. There's, I can't censor him, not if the body votes to censor him. There's nothing that he did on here. Nothing. So let's not be pretentious up here and try to make this bigger than what it is, or think that the body has bigger capabilities than it actually does. I will stand here and denounce those actions. I will do that. I denounce that this gentleman went out and engaged in his way. All right. That's, that's as far as I can go. You want me to condemn the man, or there's nothing I can do here? There really isn't. That's the reality. So you, and by the way, our city solicitor is given a packet of every single city council meeting, and has all the communications, all the ordinances, everything. If you did your homework, you would know that, instead of saying, let's send this off to her, and she already has it. Maybe you should do your homework before you come in here and insult your colleagues about whether or not they care enough about the participation and the youth and whatnot. Don't do that. I'm voting no, again, because the city solicitor already has the communications. That's what I'm going to do tonight. So if you want to have a conference, all right, go ahead, and I'll tell you the ending. This body can't do anything. You ask him to have a public apology, but that's where it ends. Want to have a campaign on the outside, say that this man did not belong here in the body? Okay, go ahead, campaign door-to-door in his neighborhood, make sure he doesn't get He engaged in a threatening manner to you outside this building, go to Chelsea Square, knock on the doors of the, open the doors of the Chelsea Police Department, file a police report. That's what you can do. And I encourage you to explore all those options. I do. I have nothing, nothing, again, I condemn what he did. I myself would not have done that. I mean, it probably wouldn't stop me from, an adult engaging, because I am a bit of a hothead, and I sometimes engage with an adult over stuff, but I would never have dressed a youth in that manner. Again, I'm saddened that it happened. I'm saddened that it happened from a colleague of mine who did this. Again, I apologize that happened. But let's not make this not more than what it is. This is not a city council, at least in my opinion, of those who voted no, who don't care about our youth. Don't do that. That's not the case here. Explore the avenues that we had here, and you'll come to the same conclusion that I spoke about tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Consular. I see Consular Vido, and then I'll go to Consular Brown. Consular Vido, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Can you all hear me?
Yes, loud and clear.
Okay. I just, I am one of the folks that pushed for the Youth Commission to come back into, it wasn't, it wasn't, it was dormant, and I pushed for it to come back. And I was disappointed to hear that when Brandon came and spoke last week, that he was approached out into the hallway along with Richie Flores by Consular Recupero, and that Consular Recupero was urging them to remove their last names. I was highly disappointed in that. I was highly disappointed in hearing Todd Taylor say that he was a trained historian, that somehow his education and his PhD program from back in the nineties reigned supreme over the education our young people received at Chelsea High School. I think we were undermining our young people, and I think it's disrespectful. I am seeing the same behaviors that the young people are complaining about right now by my colleagues and the way that we are speaking to each other, and I am embarrassed for all of you. I am embarrassed that we continue to treat each other with such disrespect. We are the leaders of this community and should really try to control our temper and lead by example, because our young people are watching. The only reason I voted against this is because I know that there is no jurisdiction and that there is nothing that we can do. I can stand here and I will denounce the behavior of Consular Recupero and the words of Consular Todd Taylor all day, every day, but from a body, there is nothing that we can do. I have urged Brandon to write a letter to the newspaper, to write a letter to the city council, to speak to the city solicitor. I have spoken to teachers, I've spoken to people outside of the city, I've spoken with Natalie from the Youth Commission, I have spoken to everybody about this, including the two young people that were affected by the words at the last council meeting. I think we all need to really figure out how we talk to each other a little bit more respectfully so we can get through these differences. If there is something that the city solicitor can do to hold them accountable, I have no doubt that she will be able to do that. But I have been a victim of people coming and disrespecting me in this day, more than once, from elected officials to, to public servants, to residents, and I am the last one to enable or allow that behavior to continue. But I also know what's within my role, and I refuse to sit here and be talked to by any city councillor, any city councillor, because that exact, the, the way that we're talking to each other is exactly what the young people are complaining about. And I'm one that likes to empower our young people to be able to come and speak, but they're not going to be able to do that if they're seeing us participating in the way that we, we're talking to each other. Overall, we all need to do better. I just want Brandon, Richie, and all the young folks. Kamani, thank you for coming from Boston, and you young people, if you don't know who Kamani James is, you should really look him up, he's really an asset in the Boston community and an advocate. These are beautiful young people that are coming here to bring wisdom from across the Tobin, and we should be encouraging them and not fighting each other. I have spoken at length with Consular Recupero, and he knows that when he said, take your last name and remove it, he knows that that was wrong and that it could be interpreted the wrong way. I know Consular Recupero's heart. I know his heart. Does he say horrible things sometimes? Absolutely, yes, one thousand percent, and I will tell him that. But at the end of the day, I don't believe it's up to me to sit here and chastise a But at the end of the day, I don't believe it's up to me to sit here and chastise a fellow colleague, because it doesn't fall under my jurisdiction. I'm here to represent the community. I can, I, I will, I will denounce it, I will back up our young folks, but in terms of me taking an empty vote simply because I want to stand on a soapbox, that's not, that's not going to happen over here.
Counselor Brown.
Madam Vice President, I just want, since we got all this conversation going on, if we could just actually entertain our city solicitor and have her follow up, because her name has come in on both sides of what we can do and what she's know. So why don't we just ask her to give us a comment towards this situation and matter? Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Brown. Chair, uh, city, our city solicitor, you're being asked to please give us an overview of what can be and cannot be done.
So, um, through you, Madam Chair, um, so what is before you is potential civil rights violations, Counselors? Regardless of what you can and can't do, that, that is what has been presented to you in these communications this evening. As the city solicitor, I am looking at a board member who is saying that potentially a city council has harassed a board member, a multi-member board of, um, the City of Chelsea. So I really don't need the city council to ask me to look into this potential civil rights violation. However, because it is a city counselor, I have always gone to the, through the city council. Um, I believe, um, most recently I was ordered to perform one similar with someone approached the city council after a vote aggressively. I believe in the past, um, I have investigated ethics violations. The city council is to uphold the laws. Civil rights are the laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. As a city solicitor, my job is to minimize risk. Risk means I need to know the facts. I need to know what happened. I would expect council would want to know what happened. So at this point, can I remove Counselor Recupero from his job? I don't have that authority, neither does the city council. Can I make sure that if this young man decides to sue the city, the city is not liable? And that's my job, is to protect the city as an entity, not just individual counselors who don't want to attack each other. I'm not trying to be mean, but I, um, I would prefer to discuss this with you on what you would want from me, but as the city solicitor, I have the right to look into it if Brandon comes to me. Brandon has not approached me as Counselor Demali has stated. I have read this. I, I received this packet actually this morning, because I wasn't in on Friday, so I now know what is actually, um, violations are. So as the city solicitor, I actually have to uphold the laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts also, especially since he is a board member appointed by the Chelsea City Council, appointed by the city manager and approved by the Chelsea City Council. He's just not a regular resident, he's a one of us. So it is up to you if you want a conference or not. I will discuss what I will do with the city manager.
So for point, point of information, so this could be sent to you via conference?
It could be. If you wish to discuss this in conference, that's fine.
Thank you. Counselor Brown, does that answer your question?
Madam.
Counselor Vianetta.
Following our city solicitor's statement, am I to understand that because this subject matter has been brought to your attention already due to the communication sent to you, that this is already, by your office, being reviewed as a potential human rights violation? The ball has sort of already started, and that that will be already started? There is no, regardless of any action by the city council, you're telling me there's already, you're already reviewing the potential of an investigation by your office? Is that correct?
No, that's not correct. What I said was I was waiting for you guys to ask me to investigate. What is correct is that I don't need you to ask me to investigate.
Can you repeat that one more time?
So what I'm trying to say to you is that I normally would deference to the city council, wait for you to order me to do an investigation. But when I have a board member, which I didn't realize until really reading all of this, who was whom, until this evening, because I was not there after the meeting last time, to know who was actually, um, making an allegation and what that allegation was from that young man. I've only heard it from Counselor, um, Garcia and Counselor, um, Avanjaneta both mentioned it to me. So I'm just trying to say to you is that there is not an investigation open, but yes, I may open an investigation with or without going to conference. I prefer to have direction from the city council or a discussion with the city council before I open up an investigation.
Thank you. And to another point of information, can this council request for you to conduct an investigation?
You can always request me. In, in the past, you have, yes. In the past, city council has.
So yes, we can.
Yes.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? Counselor.
Madam Chair.
Can I speak, Madam Chair?
Yes, Counselor Brown.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Again, I don't want to prolong the hour, but I think as a city council that we still should have a conference, so we can actually understand what's going on. I mean, if we all say, hey, you know what, we're not going to do anything, she's going to look into it, it's fine, but it's still, we don't know anything, and we still sitting here making decisions or sitting with our colleague and, and frowning at him or her. So I think we need to do some work ourself also, and it may find, we may find out that there's more there than we anticipate, or more than we believe that's there, and then we may thoroughly ask our city solicitor to go forward.
Thank you. Counselor Vianetta.
In light of the information provided by our city solicitor, I would ask my colleagues to err on the side of caution, and we, I would support a simple official request or motion to send these communications to our city solicitor to ask if to investigate, and then pending that her own investigation, if any matter needs to come before us, then she would send it, uh, the communication back to us. On the, you know, on the update of the investigation, of course, it would have to be an executive session, but I think the safest bet, the one that satisfies all parties' concerns and supports the youth, while also recognizing the limitation of our powers, is just to simply forward the communication officially to the city solicitor and ask for her review and whether it warrants an investigation before even contemplating an actual conference, which will end up being an executive session, because we may end up having a meeting over something that may not, or may not, or may or may not warrant, you know, a, an investigation. So officially send it to her, and then we get a response. I think that's the best course for us. That's the way I would ask, before we send a me, before we have a meeting.
Do you want to amend, to send all the communications to the city solicitor?
Well, that's, but I was, that's what I requested at the beginning. So we, we want to keep it as I, as I left it.
I just want to get the clarification on the amendment.
Well, what's, what is the current, what is the current motion?
Right now is the segment before, we rejected the last communication.
Correct. Just send to the city solicitor.
And your amendment is to send all the communications to the city solicitor, see if it warrants an investigation?
Correct. And that way.
That's exactly what I requested.
The first, no, we don't get, the, my amendment asks for a response from her.
Right.
Simply sending it to the city solicitor does not accomplish what we're goal here is, which was, at least we get a response back from her on whether it warrants an investigation. We're being more, we're being more clear.
Through the chair, Counselor Brown.
Again, by sending it to the city solicitor, you still don't have the account of what happened from the youth perspective, because we're sending the document directly to the city manager, I mean, city solicitor, sorry, Mr. Manager, and asking her to look into that. By having a subcommittee or committee meeting, whether, you know, one of the private ones or what, you get both sides of the story, and I just want to make sure that we don't try to curtail this, where we hear one side of the story, and the city manager said we should act on this without understanding what the youth want to do.
I see Counselor Demali Vidot, who has not spoken yet. So Counselor Vidot?
Honestly, I'm sorry, but after hearing the city solicitor, I just wanted to make an amendment that I think is identical to the other one, so I think I'll just be quiet. So basically, I just think we should send all of these communications, including the future communications, waive the reading, and just send it all to the city solicitor for the initial request of the, of Madam Vice Chair. After hearing Shavel speak, I think it's clear that we should send this over to her and let her make the decision. I just don't want to be the one to make the vote.
Thank you, Counselors. So again, colleagues, I don't want to go, I, I get it, you guys all have changed your mind after I had clearly not done my homework, but I clearly did. So can you please read the, I'm asking the city clerk, can you read what's in front of us, so there could be no confusion?
Right now, you've got a roll call. I'm waiting for a clarification on the amendment.
Counselor Vianetta, what's your amendment?
Send all the communications to city solicitor and report back on her findings. Under suspension.
Okay. So the amendment is to send all the communications to the city solicitor and request their report back to the council on her findings. Correct?
Yeah, are we moving to roll call?
No, you can do that under suspension if you want.
Under suspension. Okay, so then we move on to under suspension. The resolution is the same.
We have a copy of a communication received from Affordable Trust Fund Board in regards of 4143 Orange Street.
Counsel Robinson.
Accept and file a communication, move it to a conference. If there are no objections.
Seeing none.
We have a copy of a communication received from Roseanne Bon, I mean, from the Chelsea Youth Commission in regards to bias training.
Dear Chelsea Council, we believe the tone and feedback that received subsequent to our presentation to the city council on February 22nd, 2021, advocating for the removal of the Christopher Columbus statue was insensitive and inconsiderate of our point of view. The issue of historic statues is a topic that has been receiving national attention, and we presented a view that is relevant to many members of the Chelsea's diverse community. As a representative voice of Chelsea's youth, we believe that it is important that all residents have the freedom to speak up respectfully, as we did on various issues. Those presenters might suspect that our city counselors will listen respectfully and consider their statements, arguments, and opinions. In light of this experience on February 22nd, the Chelsea Youth Commission recommends that all city counselors complete a course or program on bias training. We hope that you accept our recommendation. What is the wish of the council?
Accept and file a communication under suspension if there are no objections.
Seeing none.
Okay. We have a copy of a communication received from Roseanne Bon Giovanni from Green Roots Inc. in regards of zoning.
What is the wish of the council?
Can we waive the reading, accept and file a communication under suspension since she spoke during public speaking?
Motion to accept and file under suspension, waive the reading, seeing no objection.
We have all these emails.
We have a number of emails.
I can read the names. They're all in favor of the marijuana zoning change.
We have a, let me see, one, how many?
One, two, three, four, five, six.
I'm going to, we have a, we have a number of emails. Eight emails. I'll read off the names. Some of them have already appeared in front of us and talked in favor of the, uh, voting to amend our marijuana retail zoning laws.
Right.
Do you have a motion to accept and file the communications, the emails?
I have a motion to accept and file all emails received by residents under suspension if there are no objections.
Seeing none, no, no objection, so moved. The names are Kyle Umember, Maxwell Egert, Louisa, 218 Washington Avenue, Yurita Rivera, Jody D.A. Francis, Joan Cromwell, Justin Zabrowski Blackston, Ola Baiota. Now going to move on to unfinished business.
Under unfinished business, Madam Chairman, we have the municipal harbor plan before us.
So we do have, would you like to read, city clerk?
The municipal harbor plan?
Yes. Oh, I'm sorry, we can waive it, yes. The, so what we do have before us is Amendment 1 for the municipal harbor plan.
Counsel.
Do we have a motion? Counselor Vianetta.
I have a motion to approve Amendment Number 1, which is the creation of waterfront, upland, and port district on a roll call vote.
Amendment 15?
Amendment 1.
No, no, no. Amendment Number 1, which is, uh...
The creation of the waterfront and upland and port district.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, Counselor Vidot.
Um, we doing each amendment separately?
Yes, for clarification, for the counselors who are here present, we are voting amendment by amendment, and then once everything has been voted on individually, we will move on to adopt it as a packet.
Okay.
And I will ask, for purposes of clarification, thank you, Counselor Vidot, I will ask our council clerk to talk a little bit more of what that vote will look like.
Right now, you're voting on the proposed amendments that are before you in the municipal harbor plan. You received the package as amended by the planning, by the planning board, and now the counselors are offering further amendments. They require a majority vote. You then will vote on the entire package as amended, which would require a two-thirds vote.
Is that clear? Does anyone have any questions?
So we're voting on 17 amendments on the municipal harbor plan?
That is correct.
That's correct. Through the chair. That's correct.
They're all properly before you.
So they're all properly before you, and we will be mentioned, we will be calling them up one by one for roll call, if that's the wish and motion of the council before us.
You want to read off the amendment?
So the proposed amendment.
I should be doing that.
To one.
So the proposed amendment, one, is the creation of waterfront, upland, port district, and it reads as follows. Whereas the Chelsea City Council has the authority to adopt ordinances to protect the health, safety, and welfare of all residents of the City of Chelsea, and whereas the specific objective of the City of Chelsea zoning ordinance states that the need to encourage the most appropriate use of land throughout the City of Chelsea, and whereas a further specific objective of the City of Chelsea zoning ordinance states that the need to preserve and increase amenities, whereas the City of Chelsea wishes to protect the industrial character of the portion of the waterfront along Chelsea Creek that remains within the designated port area, and whereas the City of Chelsea wishes to increase its tax base through thoughtful redevelopment of underutilized parcels along and adjacent to the waterfront along Chelsea Creek, whereas the City of Chelsea is committed to harmonizing and aligning its zoning ordinances with the recommendations of the Chelsea Creek municipal, municipal harbor plan and designated port area master plan, whereas the Massachusetts Constitution guarantees the people of the Commonwealth the right to clean air and water, freedom from excessive noise, and the natural, historic, and aesthetic qualities of their environment, whereas the city council finds that the exposure to fossil fuel exhaust is not conducive to the health of residents of Chelsea, and whereas the city council finds that fossil fuel exhaust contributes to climate change, now therefore be it ordained that the revised code of ordinances of the City of Chelsea is amended by further amended and adopted as follows. An ordinance revising Part 2, Chapter 34 of the Chelsea Code. Counselor Vianetta.
I'm asking not to read the whole amendment packet, but simply read the amendments, because we've had that packet in our hands for the last four, six months. Just simply read, we know that it's the waterfront, that the amendment altogether from one... That the amendments altogether from 1 to 17, and that'll be in front of us.
Okay.
So if you read the agenda, it'll tell you what we're doing.
Great. So briefly, the counselor has made a motion to waive the lengthy reading, thank you, and just simply bring it up by the summary of the agenda. So what we have is Amendment 1, Creation of Waterfront, Upland, and Port District. So that's what we have properly before us. And then what we have next is Amendment 2, that Section 3428 overlay districts be amended by deleting the waterfront industrial overlay district. And Amendment Number 3 is amending divided lots. Amendment Number 4 is amending dimensional table by adding port. Amendment Number 5 is amending lot coverage in port and waterfront upland. Amendment Number 6 is landscaping requirement in waterfront. Amendment Number 7 is adding performance standards in waterfront. Amendment Number 8 is creating waterfront improvement trust fund. Amendment Number 9 is special permit criteria amendment in port district. Amendment Number 10 is site plan amendment in port area master plan. Amendment Number 11 is site plan amendment in port area minor plan. Amendment Number 12 is the site plan review amendment. Amendment Number 13 is site plan review amendment in DPA. Amendment Number 14 is addition of definitions in WP, which is the waterfront port. And Amendment Number 15 is adding dimensional regulations of port and waterfront upland. And that's what we have so far in front of us, and then we have...
And that's 16 and 17.
We have... Yes, I got it. Through the chair. So Amendment 16 is Table of Principal Use Amendments, and Amendment Number 17 is amending zoning map with new map. That's what we have properly before us, unless there are any amendments that have been presented by any councilors here. I see Counselor Avellaneda.
Mrs. President, I have an amendment that is on the agenda, and it's to amend Number 15, which is the... Which resetting the dimensional regulations of the port and waterfront upland area. The amendment is to change the upland area maximum height, which is currently the same as the waterfront 45, to equal the same as the port area, so that they're both the same, so that the upland maximum height and the port will be equal. It would read 65 by right and 80 by special permit. That'll be... That's my motion to amend Number 16.
So...
I'm sorry, Number 15.
Number 15. So Number 15, the motion before us, it's what everyone has on their packet. And is there any discussion? Does anyone else wish to speak on the matter? I see Counselor Avellaneda, you have the floor.
The reason why is that, for some reason, when they... When it was presented, they increased the height that could be done on the water side, but they left the old height on the non-water side. I think it's imperative that you give at least a chance for the water, non-water side, that if and when there are, I don't know, 65 height salt piles that you have in front of you, that they should be equal to that across the street. It'll allow for, A, again, to address what we talked about, the economics needed to build there, and also be equal to what is across the street, so that the potential residents that are there will have actual sight beyond large mountains of salt, which they currently do not have. It also takes into account the topography that is there. Everything behind them is on a hill and a slope, so actually, all of the buildings behind this area are much higher elevation, so it wouldn't be a sort of impediment to those in the back. Again, it's making it equal to so that the zones max each other, and I'm asking for an approval by my colleagues.
I see Counselor Vidal, you have the floor.
Yeah. I just, we've had this before us for months. We've had several subcommittees. I don't feel comfortable approving an amendment on the floor without having had a proper discussion about this in the subcommittee meeting. So if there is an amendment to anything, I will ask that we are voting on things individually, anyway, right? So we're having 17 different amendment votes.
That's correct.
Correct. Okay, just wanted to clarify. Okay. I just wanted to state that, that if there's anything that's being amended on the floor, just in order for me to do my due diligence, I wouldn't feel comfortable supporting that today.
Anyone else would like to speak on the matter before we vote on the amendment? Going once. Counselor Vidal, is that your hand raised again, or is that an accident?
It was an accident, sorry.
Got it. Okay, Counselor Robinson?
Most of these things call for special permits on the waterfront?
So through the chair, he had a question for Counselor Avellaneda. Counselor Avellaneda is nodding yes. Okay, is everyone else ready for a roll call on the amendment? Seems like it, so I will ask the clerk to clarify the vote.
Yeah, if you vote yes on the amendment, it's adopted. And then we'll have the entire package afterwards if there are no other amendments, but I believe there is another one coming. So a yes would be to approve it.
Counselor Recupero?
So if we vote yes on all this, everything's adopted, right?
No.
No.
Just this one piece?
This particular piece is inserted into the whole package. Counsel Vidal?
No.
Counsel Officer Nada?
Yes.
Counsel Recupero?
Yes.
Counsel Garcia?
No.
Counsel Maldonado?
Counsel Maldonado?
No.
No. Counsel Robertson?
Yes.
Counsel Rodriguez?
No.
Counsel Taylor?
Yes.
Counsel Lopez?
No.
Counsel Brown?
Yes.
Counsel Zabit?
Yes.
One, two, three, four, five, six in favor. One, two, three, four, five, oppose the amendment carries.
Okay, now we move on.
We have another amendment.
Do we have another amendment on the floor?
Yes, we do.
Chairwoman, Council... Recognize as Counselor Avellaneda.
The amendment that I have is to strike some of the allowed uses that was originally proposed by the city in the new waterfront upland zone. As you recall, I brought this up, this subject matter, in the subcommittee meeting to talk about whether or not we should have certain uses adjacent to residential lots and homes. And I have provided a list of those uses that I don't think fit well next to homes, and rather should be, and quite frankly, do not belong on the waterfront, on the non-water side, and also have been uses that have currently been allowed for the last 50 years, but we have not seen being taken advantage of. So again, I don't foresee, A, that any of these uses would ever be there, and second, wouldn't want them to be allowed next to residential homes anyway. So I'd like to make sure that our residents are not putting up with the pains of industrial or light industrial, whatever you want to call it, uses. And I will read off the uses that I'm talking about, that, and I'm going to say simply, would you want any of these uses next to your home, which is why I'm saying no. Enclosed seafood processing, seafood packing, and packaging. Institutional uses, marine research, education, and laboratory facilities, not including overnight accommodations. Boat and accessory sales, service, and rental establishments. Boat storage facilities and rack storage facilities. Boat building and ship building, including facilities for construction, fabrication, maintenance, and repair of boats exceeding 60 feet in length. Commercial or industrial laundry. Harbor and marine and services, chandleries, ship supply, not including the bunkering of vessels. Marine offices, including without limitation, offices of owners and wharves or their agent, naval architects or seafood brokers. Accessory maritime uses. Storage of vehicles for hire or return from hire. Marine industrial-related museum. Marine-related research, laboratories, and scientific development. A moving company with less than 15,000 square feet gross floor area. A moving company greater than 15,000 square foot. Light manufacturing. Wholesale business and storage in connection with wholesale business. Manufacturing. Manufacturing biotech. Fabrication of marine-related goods, marine industrial welding, marine repair services, and marine machine shops. Marine-related supported and light industrial. That is the list that I am striking, looking to strike, so that all of the uses that were actually highlighted in the planning board will remain, which is mixed-use, retail, commercial, mixed-use residential. These are the ones that, A, have never been located there, will not foresee, don't offer much tax dollars if they were there, and quite frankly, would be a bad influence, or rather, negative impact on the existing homes that are right there adjoining lots on the other side of the fence. So I'm asking my neighbor, my colleagues, rather, to approve this amendment, so that the neighbors there can finally be rest assured that nothing ever like Boston Hides and Furs, or any welding, or any loud noise, or dust, or anything like that, are not ever on the other side of their fence. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Anyone else wish to comment on the amendment? Counselor Brown?
I think, you know, some of those things that my fellow councilors are trying to strike would actually work in that area there. I mean, and it's true that most likely, none of them are really going to try to petition us to come there. But some of the things that was mentioned there, I mean, because it's the waterfront, because it's an area where shipping and water supplies and water storage, I mean, that's the only place you can have those kind of businesses if they come in here. You can't have them in Prattville. You can't have them over in Fort Park. Well, maybe you can't have them over in Fort Park, it's water area. So I think just to have the opportunity to have something, if we, you know, in the future, entertain a business to come in here, we should at least have that opportunity. And again, it has to go to special permitting, so I'll be voting to... I'd be voting against that, because I just think some of those things that you mentioned, a lot of those things that you mentioned, they fit, they fit well in there. It's not a Boston Hides and Furs. It's not a place where they're going to be doing, you know, killing the animals and leaving them out on the sidewalks and smelling up the ventilations and all that. I think we've come far further than that to allow something to come back there like that. And I think with the special permitting, that we'll see that at the door if it becomes too outdoor for proposal. Thank you.
Counsel Recupero?
What are we voting on? Amendment 2, the waterfront industrial overlay?
No.
We're voting on an amendment presented by Counselor Avellaneda for Amendment Number 16. So Amendment Number 16 is the Table of Principal Use Amendment. So Counselor... Counselor Avellaneda has an amendment in front of you?
Yes.
It's this amendment in front of you. It's Amendment 16. Amendment 16.
16?
Yes. 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 Counselor Avellaneda has presented properly before us an amendment, which is what we're discussing now. Does that answer your question? Through the chair.
Through the chair, there is an amendment that would take away light industrial and marine-related industrial out from the non-water side, so the areas that border Suffolk Street, Highland, not Highland, rather, Shertlift and Hawthorne. We would not allow welding, light industrial, manufacturing, or seafood plants and such related areas. They would simply stay on the other side of Marginal Street, which is the water side.
So more or less what you're saying is anything after the street, on the water side, anything before, like with Boston Hides, is right? You don't want to allow industrial? You don't want none of that stuff?
Through the chair.
No.
Is that what it is? You just want to allow what, development of houses?
It'll be mixed-use development, commercial, bakeries, convenience stores.
Again, guys, through the chair, Counselor Recupero, we just spent five minutes allowing Counselor Avellaneda to present this.
I understand Madam President, Vice President, but I was deaf, and I wasn't allowed here. I didn't know what it was. So if I'm asking, because I want to make sure, is what I'm going to do.
And I understand that, Counselor. I understand that, Counselor.
Disciplining me on asking a question.
I completely understand that, Counselor, but it is right in front of you, and you can read it. It clearly states.
Yeah, it is in front of me, but I didn't hear it. I'm reading it, and then there's something different. So I want to hear it from the person that's amendment. What is it?
Through the chair. Through the chair. Did he answer your question?
What?
Did he answer your question?
Did he answer my question? Yes. That's all I wanted to know. Is that so hard?
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak on the matter before we go on a roll call? Counsel Robinson, and then Counsel Vidal.
Kind of weigh in on this?
Can you, can you speak into the mic?
Can we ask John DePreez, who's on? Can he weigh in on this?
Through the chair, yes. John DePreez, would you like to weigh on the matter?
I would object, because it's Carl Allen. John DePreez was not the one who did the waterfront. That was Carl Allen.
Counsel Robinson, what is your motion?
He objected, so it's done.
So we had an objection. And I see Counselor Vidal, would you like to speak?
Yes, I just simply wanted to... Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I just wanted to... I actually agree with my colleague, Counsel Brown, in some of the things that Counsel Avellaneda mentioned. With respect to like seafood use or things that are specific to the merit to the marine business, I do think that it seems like an appropriate location. Again, I feel really uncomfortable with these amendments. This is such a convoluted process, and I do feel really uncomfortable with having amendments on the floor, so I will be voting against the amendments.
Thank you, Counselor. Anyone else wish to speak on the amendment? Okay, we move on to roll call on the amendment. To the council clerk, can you please clarify the vote?
A yes would be to adopt the amendment, a no would be to deny it. Counsel Vidal?
No.
Counsel Officer Nada?
Yes.
Counsel Recupero?
No.
Counsel Garcia?
No.
Counsel Vega Maldonado?
Yes.
Counsel Robinson?
No.
Counsel Rodriguez?
No.
Counsel Taylor?
No.
Counsel Lopez?
No.
Counsel Brown?
No.
And Counsel Zabit?
Yes.
Three in favor. Eight oppose. The amendment is repeated.
Now we move on to the...
Any more amendments?
Oh, yes. Any other amendments before us? Okay, we move on to...
Someone has to request a roll call for the...
The motion to adopt the municipal harbor plan as amended.
As amended. Two-thirds required.
Two-thirds requirement vote in favor.
Okay, so now we move on to adopt this package as amended.
The whole package, as amended.
Two-thirds is required. Yes, we're all set.
Counsel Vidal?
Yes.
Counsel Officer Nada?
Yes.
Counsel Recupero? Counsel Garcia?
Yes.
Counsel Vega Maldonado?
Yes.
Counsel Robinson? Counsel Rodriguez?
Yes.
Counsel Taylor?
Yes.
Counsel Lopez?
Yes.
Counsel Brown? Counsel Brown?
Yes.
And Counsel Zabit?
Yes.
Eleven in favor and none opposed, motion is adopted.
Motion is adopted, now we move on to the next item properly before us.
The next item is the Revere Beach Parkway area from Route One to Business Highway.
So we will begin discussing this again, just like we did before, Counselor Avellaneda.
I will move on a roll call, motion to adopt a roll call vote.
And may I speak on it?
You may.
First, I would be in favor, this is a motion that I had brought to the planning board to revise the Route sixteen area originally, this, it read as originally here, Revere Beach Parkway Route sixteen area to Business Highway, however, the planning board recommended that we not adopt it as a business highway, but rather as a BR two district, therefore, I am introducing the amendment to change the business highway to BR two to follow the recommendations of the planning board.
Anyone else wish to speak or comment on the matter? Any other city councilor? Okay, so we move on to properly...
No, we got a need of roll call, vote.
Roll call.
Counsel Vidal?
Yes.
Counsel Avellaneda?
Yes.
Counsel Recupero?
Yes.
Counsel Garcia?
Yes.
Counsel Vega Maldonado?
Yes.
Counsel Robinson?
Yes.
Counsel Rodriguez?
Yes.
Counsel Taylor?
Yes.
Counsel Lopez?
Yes.
Counsel Brown?
Yes.
And Counsel Zabit?
Yes.
Eleven in favor and none opposed, the motion is adopted. The next one before us is the...
Zoning amendments.
Zoning amendments.
Yes. So we have the zoning amendments, is there a motion from this council? Counsel Avellaneda?
Motion to adopt on a roll call vote, and if I may speak on it?
You may speak on it.
We are in a motion to adopt the seven, I'm sorry, six. Six amendments, and they would change the density.
Actually, seven, seven amendments.
Seven, sorry, seven.
Seven amendments.
And they would, these amendments include the change, changing the number of units, or no, rather, descriptions in the R two district, the dimensions in the R one and R two, number of questions, number of units allowed, and also would amend the Park Street area from an R two district to an RB district, this is the Boyo Campero area between Park Ave and, well, Congress, but there's a street behind it, I can't think of the street that's behind. And there's also amendment six, which was the creation of a downtown parking district sticker program for those who get a special permit. And then the creation number seven is the creation, amendment number seven is the creation of the mixed overlay district, which is the area over the triangle area off of Everdave and Vale Street for the density.
Counsel Avellaneda, are you requesting for us to vote this amendment by amendment?
I am, I made a motion to, a motion to adopt as approved by the planning board, recommended by the planning board.
As it's presented to us.
No. I'm asking to adopt as recommended by the planning board. If we do so, we will not be accepting amendment six, because they recommended not to approve it.
Okay, I see Counsel Robinson.
I did have an amendment to offer in regards to downtown parking.
Counsel Robinson, can you speak into the mic, please?
My apologies to the chair. I do have an amendment in regards to downtown overnight parking. Notwithstanding the language in subsection six above, the disqualification from participating in the general residential parking sticker program shall not prevent residents in the retail business district from securing a downtown overnight parking sticker, and the Traffic and Parking Commission creates a limited downtown overnight parking district for the purpose of encouraging downtown residential development, provided that the leases or subleases and the deeds for such buildings in this retail business district must specifically state that a tenant or owner may not obtain or apply for a regular City of Chelsea residential parking sticker, and there shall be not more than one downtown overnight parking sticker provided for any residential unit and any structure in the downtown overnight parking district. That was my amendment that I was offering up.
So Counsel, Counsel Robinson, are you requesting for your amendment to be properly before us?
Yes, I'm asking for a roll call vote, yes.
So what's properly before us is an amendment for a roll call.
On an amendment.
On, yes, on the amendment that's been discussed. Okay, before, before we proceed, I see some other councillors, so Counsel Brown, I'll give you the floor.
So I got this document in my hand here, so what you read was seven, what about six above it? Is that something we're striking out? Have you read seven? So what about six, which Counsel Avellaneda stated was six?
Through the chair.
Sorry, through the chair. If you look at the amendment packet, okay, amendment number six includes this paragraph that is six and seven.
Correct.
Counselor Robinson's amendment replaces its amendment six, and it has, adds paragraph six and seven. So it would adopt all of this.
Okay.
If you look at this packet right here, the amendment in the packet is number six, and that's why it's called number six.
Okay. Well, I saw that, but he only read seven, that's why I questioned.
Counsel Brown, did that answer your question?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chairman.
Counsel, any other councillors wish to speak? I see Counsel Vidal.
Yeah, I just feel that that's a lot of words for us to be amending on the floor. I will be voting against it.
Thank you, Counselor. Anyone else wish to speak? Counsel Avellaneda?
Yes, the planning board raised a lot of questions in regards to this, and when we spoke about this, and recommended that we not approve it. Also, when we had a subcommittee on this, there was, I felt that there was a sentiment, and I share it with my colleague Counsel Vidal, that it seems to be a circumvention of what originally the council had voted for, which was that if you were going to ask for a special permit and not adhere to parking guidelines, then you were not going to qualify for the parking residency program. I just think that, again, I'm not buying into the words of developers right now who are building on top of downtown Broadway, and then with no thought whatsoever into solving any of their parking needs, and then are asking the city to come with creative ways to solve the problems they are, they are creating. So I'd be happy to once again take a look at, you know, what the parking requirements are, if it's down to a one versus a one point five, or point seven five, but to say that we're not going to ask for them to not build any parking whatsoever, at all, and then ask us to bail them out again, I just don't, you know, again, I don't agree with it, because as I say, they have come in front of the board, they state years for years, oh, don't worry about the cars, because everyone's jumping on the silver line, don't worry about the cars, because they're all using Uber, and all this other stuff. And the zoning board bought it, hook, line, and sinker, and now, when we finally said, okay, you want to play this game, you say you're not going to have cars, we're not going to give you parking permits, now all of a sudden, they're coming back. And it's like, oh, no, no, we do need cars, we need, you know, our tenants do have cars, and I can't make a buck if, you know, I'm trying to rent an apartment without having a parking spot, so I need the parking spot off the street. Well, no, you should have thought of that before you built up, up, and up, you know, you should have thought, well, maybe we're going to have to have parking, so you can't have, you can eat it too. So I'd rather have a much more thorough conversation about what the downtown parking needs should be, you know, if you want to build a garage, okay, let's have at it, let's have a serious conversation, that we've been begging for years, that we have a downtown parking garage, and we haven't had it, and instead, we're, you know, being told, oh, no, we're going to have the parking underneath the Toven Bridge. Look, you know how many people I already have calling me, when we're going to start allowing existing residents to park underneath there, and we're already promising this to developers? Sorry, I, I just, again, you, you, instead of solving today's problems, you're creating tomorrow's problems, and this is just a way to delay it. So with all due respect to my colleagues, I will be voting no.
Okay, any more comments on the amendment before us, or any of the matters? Okay, so we move on to roll call if our, on the amendment, if our third, please clarify the vote.
If you agree on the amendment, then you would be changing item amendment number six to the proposal by Counsel Robinson. That would be a yes vote. Counsel Vidal?
No.
Counsel Avellaneda?
No.
Counsel Recupero?
No.
Counsel Garcia?
No.
Counsel Vega Maldonado?
No.
Counsel Robinson?
Yes.
Counsel Rodriguez?
No.
Counsel Taylor?
No.
Counsel Lopez?
No.
Counsel Brown?
No.
And Counsel Zabit?
No.
One in favor, ten opposed, the amendment is defeated.
So that particular amendment has been defeated, and now properly before us, does the council have a motion? Counsel Avellaneda?
Yes, on the motion to adopt as a whole, I'd like to speak on it.
You have the floor.
Thank you. I will be voting in favor of the increases of, and these changes in the amendments, including changing the zoning for the Park Square area, and also some of the density. The city manager spoke earlier tonight about that the changes that they're proposing is not as dramatic, and when he brought up an example of where he lived, it actually reminded me of, you know, my first home, which was a, that I bought, which was a three family. It was a three family on Bellingham Hill, I had a five thousand square foot lot, and it was a three family, and I had three park, a driveway and three parking spots in back. That's on five thousand square feet, a three family. In addition to that, I had a porch in the front and a porch in the back, every single apartment had that. So when we're talking about these marginal from seventy-five hundred dollars, seventy-five hundred square feet down to five thousand, to build a two family in those areas, I don't see it a problem, when I myself knew what it would experience like to live in a three family with a five thousand square foot lot. Many of you may not know this, but the reason why we have a seventy-five hundred square foot lot requirement in those R twos, you're looking at it. Back when Jay Ash was still planning director, I asked him, could we try to get a little bit more control of the inherent rights that we have right now, of, you know, allowing some of this building that's going on, because on, on, at the time, you know, we had four thousand square foot minimum lot sizes, so it was, it was crazy that we were allowing four thousand lot sizes, and we're having three families be built. So he said, yeah, sure, go ahead, make a suggestion, and I went with seventy-five hundred square feet. Lo and behold, I didn't know it was going to come and bite us back in the butt, you know, so many years later, that seventy-five hundred square foot lot. So reducing it back down to the suggestions that the current city manager and staff have makes sense. That's number one. The other reason why I'm supporting this is just the financials of it all. Now, you know, I equate housing units, residential, development, whatever, in dollars and cents, because, you know, it's, it's cost what the tax revenue is going to be from that sort of development. Last year, I stood here and I said, you know what, we need to cut the budget in certain places, and I suggested we cut the downtown coordinator's position, it was like sixty-something thousand dollars. I was outvoted, I get it, that's fine, but in order to have that position, you need eighteen units of affordable housing. That's what that position costs to fund. Eighteen, you have to keep that person hired, you need to have eighteen affordable housing units built, tax revenue from those. If it's market rate condos, it's twelve, three families, lower and lower, you get an idea, that's how you equate. So every time we talk about, you know, can we build on these lots, or can we have development, there are financial implications. So yes, you want to fund food pantries, you want to offer our graduating high school students, you know, an education all the way through a bachelor's degree, or rather, a bachelorette's degree at a local community college, yeah, how are you going to pay for it? This is how you do it. Associate's degree, sorry, thank you. This is how you got to do it, you got to, you know, you got to build upon the land that you have. Now, that's one, that's another reason, the financial implications of why I'm supporting this. You know, lastly, there was a, a conversation about, you know, what gets torn down, and then what gets built in response. You know, for someone who's been canvassing the, you know, homes of Chelsea for the last twenty years, both as a political candidate knocking on so many doors, and also as a real estate professional who's walked into so many houses, I can tell you, there's a lot of properties, a lot of homes, that need to be knocked down. They are not healthy, they have far outlived their use, they're way over a hundred years old, and not, and they're be, and it could cost hundreds of thousand dollars to actually repair them in a current livable state. And quite frankly, a lot of properties just outlive their use, and you have to understand that sometimes, the people who owned those homes over the years, because we lived in a, you know, low income community, they weren't always kept up properly. And so, yeah, sometimes a house has to get knocked down, and guess what gets replaced? A newer, safer, healthier home. And I can guarantee you, the fire department's drilled when that happens, because that home now has probably a sprinkler system, you know? That home probably doesn't have unsafe windows that are, you know, four inches off the floor, because that's what they had back then. There are a number of improvements that happen when a home that is old, dilapidated, and quite frankly, some of these homes that were originally a single family, that got Frankenstein into a two, or is now a three, and makes no sense whatsoever, I mean, let's look, let's face it, they, they can be replaced. And that's just the nature of real estate. No one bemoaned, it happens not only in residential, it happens also in business, and it happens also in state. No one bemoaned when the mullah said, hey, you know what, our current building no longer fits our needs, we're going to knock it down, and we're going to build a brand new, bigger store. Baldor, that located originally on Second Street, outgrew its original location, then moved to William Street, finally went to Eastern Ave, knocked down a warehouse, and built a mega site to fit its needs. That's what happens. I didn't see anyone complaining and chaining themselves to Chelsea High School when we knocked it down and built a brand new school. This is what happens in real estate. Sometimes you knock it down, you're going to complain that the, you know, we knocked down Chelsea High, when you replaced it with what is there now? It's bigger, brighter, more energy efficient, by the way, you're also rebuilding homes that are no longer energy efficient, having old systems, old pipes, lead pipes, lead paint, and all that. So, yeah, again, I am for this, it's, 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 it is a modest increase, and some of these densities that you're talking about is still, this is still less dense than some of the projects that advocates went in favor of. It's dense, less dense than Arcadia, TND's building, it's less dense than Midas, it's less dense than Highland, and those are all affordable, but when you talk about creating homeownership opportunities for... But when you talk about creating homeownership opportunities for our residents, potentially, you're saying, oh, no, that's too dense? That makes no sense. You're actually pushing, again, I said it two weeks ago, you're pushing out the very same working class here because they can't afford to live here anymore. They can't. So why are we not building them homes that they can come and buy? If it's denser, they're gonna have, we could negotiate affordable units in them too. It shouldn't be just dense. I remind you, take out the FBI building and every single high-rise in this building, in this city, every single high-rise in this city, except for the FBI building, is an affordable housing unit building. Margolis, Buckley, the Glen, the Two Towers in Admiral Hill. Everything that is tall and high is all affordable. Why is it we're allowing all that density, but we're not giving a homeownership opportunity or whatever on the other side and say, no, 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 you're too dense? That makes no sense at all. This is, this, this is a modest proposal. I encourage everyone to approve it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. I see Counselor Brown, you have the floor.
Thank you, Ms. President, Ms. Vice President, I'll be quick. We just voted against the parking order just not but a half a block away from the area we're speaking about. That, that my fellow counsel just spoke about, that's all good and dandy if we're looking at homeownership, if we're looking at one or two units. But if we're looking at something like 100 Pearl Street or larger, then again, you have, you have a dense area that will be compact. So, excuse me, excuse me. So we don't know what's gonna go there. Matter of fact, we're talking about the compare chicken place here there, so houses can go there. It sounds good on paper, but without knowing what's gonna go there, you can get a, you can get 25, 26 units here. And again, now you can overflow that area again. You don't have anything other than people trying to look for parking spaces, trying to get from one place to another. And we call, we, we, we have a hazard area that congested. It's not like what we're talking about over by Vale Street, what we're talking about down behind the track. We're talking about in the center of Park Street, right over there, where Division going, coming into Chelsea. So I just want us to be careful about what we vote on without knowing what's gonna be there. Yeah, if it's gonna be, you know, homeownership, we're gonna have four units there, great, you don't need a car. But if it's gonna be a unit where you're gonna have 25 units, 26 units, you're gonna have a problem. People still wanna bring their cars. Believe it or not, people still wanna drive cars. People still own cars. And when they come to Chelsea, they're not gonna come to Chelsea just because they have to get rid of a car. They're gonna come to Chelsea because this is the place that they wanna come to, but it's also a place that they know they can get what they want here. So let us be careful about what we're voting on. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Brown, uh, Counselor Giovanni Recupero.
Now, over here, it says the part that kind of surprises me is the open space area.
Is that amendment number three that you're referring to?
The open space area, right, in this section here, where it says it should be reduced. Reduced by one square foot for each square foot of open space that is accessible to the general public. Why are we decreasing the open space? Why don't we increase open space? You know, where the people can get it. Where here, we're saying less. That's the only problem I have with this is the open space area. You should have more open space, more things for the people, you know, more open space so we can all enjoy it more. Otherwise, I see no problem with this. There's nothing really, you're doing by what the law says. The law allows you to build so much and such a thing and you making more affordable units. So it's a good thing. Just the open space, I don't understand the open space. Why are we reducing it from one square foot open space? We're reducing it. Maybe reduce by one square foot for each square foot. Why are we reducing it? I'd like to know just why we're reducing it. It's, otherwise, I don't see anything wrong with this.
Do you want to pose that question to, do you want to pose that question to John De Priest?
I'm sorry?
Would you like to pose the question to John De Priest through the chair?
Yes, I would like to pose the question to John De Priest.
Okay, through the chair, John De Priest, the question is properly before you from Counselor Recupero. If you can, you're muted, if you can please unmute yourself. We can't hear you.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes, clouding clear.
Okay, thank you. If you're decreasing the size of the parcel, you're not gonna be able to create as much open space as you would if possible larger. And it's a little bit of a misnomer when we say that we are decreasing the amount of open space. What we're decreasing is the amount of open space as defined by the zoning. And in this case, in a flat area, it's anything at least 10 feet by 10 feet. You're still gonna have open space in side yards and in front rear yards that don't qualify under the definition of open space, but they'd still be open or, or landscaped.
Was that clear, Counselor?
Okay, so the answer is, well, I didn't really, I couldn't hear too great because of that. So what did, he's actually saying, we, we're not decreasing it. We're leaving it alone, more or less, that's what he said, right?
Through the chair, John De Priest.
We, we're decreasing the official definition of open space.
Decreasing the official, they're decreasing the official definition. They're decreasing the official definition of open space.
But they're not decreasing the amount.
Through the chair, but you're not decreasing the amount. Through the chair, John De Priest.
Technically, we are, yes.
Technically, they are, yes. Technically, they are, yes.
Nah, don't like that.
Does that answer your question, Counselor Recupero?
What?
Does it answer your question?
Yes, it does.
Okay, does answer his question any other Counselor? Counselor Vidal.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I actually ask that we take amendment two, three, and four and lay it on the table for future conversation. I, just to speak on it, I appreciate Counselor, the Counsel President's viewpoint about how real estate works. And my argument is that that is the exact problem, that we tend to cater to certain folks in the community as opposed to the needs here. We are creating a concrete jungle in a city that is a heat island, that is one of the most densest in the state and the nation. We have one family houses being turned into eight units, 10 units. And we're creating this false illusion that this is an opportunity at homeownership when really you're seeing, you're not seeing a lot of families that are moving into these two-bedroom condos that are, these conversions. The fact of the matter is that a family wants a yard. A family wants space for their kids to play in. And so what we're doing is perpetuating a transient population that comes into Chelsea temporarily and then leaves. And we cannot piecemeal our way through this. I think we need a zoning master plan. I think we need a holistic approach to this. And I think that that's the most responsible way of going about this, as opposed to trying to cater to developers and people who, of affluence, that are just perpetuate, perpetuating the displacement of our residents. So I don't think that we should be voting on this. I'll be voting against it, or I ask that we at least lay it on the table, the amendments two, three, and four, because I will not be supporting it as is. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Vidal. I do want to clarify something for the entire council. I am being informed by our council clerk that it is out of order to table the amendments as presented. So amendment two, three, and four cannot be tabled. However, you do have the option to, to send the whole package. So the, so this particular item before us, the packet in front of us, you have the, the option to send all of it to, to, to table it. So you have the option to table amendment one, two, three, four, five, six, and seven. You have that option.
Then I move to table it, the entire package.
You move to table it?
Yes.
No discussion, you have a roll call.
So now, there's no discussion. We have a roll call properly before us, according to our council clerk. I see our city solicitor who wishes to speak. So before we move to, we make any other motion, I will have the city solicitor speak.
I, I do want to caution the timeline that once the public hearing closes, you have only so many days before you need to vote on this particular amendment or on this zoning change. So it's a petition. So we're laying it on the table forever. I just wanted to caution, okay?
We've advertised it. What the city solicitor is trying to say, we've advertised it and you have so many days from the public hearing to adopt it or not adopt it.
Can, point of, point of inquiry, how many days?
John, correct me if I'm wrong, is it another 65 or 100 days from the date of the public hearing closing?
Sixty-five.
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 Sixty-five days. So for the record, for this council, the, the motion properly before us is to table all the amendments that I previously mentioned based on the counsel of our city solicitor and John De Priest. We have 65 days.
From the date that we closed the public hearing?
From the date that we close the public hearing.
Which was two weeks ago.
Which was two weeks ago.
Okay.
Is that clear? So I will ask the clerk to please clarify the vote in front of us.
A yes vote would table the item before you and a no vote would be to continue, uh, continue on with the discussion.
So I have, I have Counselor Recupero who has a question. And if there's any other Counselor, please raise your hand. Counselor Recupero.
Okay, on this part here, right? On this.
Can you clarify what part? Can you clarify for the people who are, who are virtually?
On B section, a standard district, districts should be voted by Everett Avenue Northeast, by Everett City Line on Northeast, by the MBTA. I have a issue about what that is. Are we talking about?
So we can't have, we can't have discussion.
Yes or no?
We're, we're laying it on the table right now. We can't have any more discussion on the matter because we've laid it on the table. We've laid it on the table, so you can decide. So just to clarify, Counselor Vidal has laid it on the table, which means we cannot have a discussion on it. So you can vote yes to lay it on the table. And if you do that, then we won't be discussing, we have a tight deadline. If you vote no, then we can have discussion, we can continue to discuss.
So for yes, we lay it on the table.
Correct.
No, we're not laying it on the table.
And we continue to discuss it.
And we continue to discuss.
Counselor Vidal.
Yes.
Yes to lay it on the table, okay. Counselor Avizaneda?
No.
Counsel Recupero?
No.
Counselor Garcia?
Yes.
Counselor Vega Maldonado?
Counselor Vega Maldonado?
No. Counsel Robinson?
No.
Counsel Rodriguez?
No.
Counsel Taylor?
No.
Counsel Lopez?
No.
Counselor Brown?
Yes.
And Counselor Zabit?
No.
No, okay. Two and, uh, three in favor and one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight opposed. The item is still before you for debate.
Any other comments? Any motions?
There's a motion before you.
So the motion before us is the one present, just for clarification purposes, the motion before us is the motion that was originally presented to us by Counsel Avellaneda. Now, does anyone else wish to speak? To adopt, and to, to clarify, this is to adopt as presented by the planning board. And by, by amended by the planning board. So anyone else wish to speak? Counselor Vidal.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. I just want to reiterate what I just stated. We are in a housing crisis right now and we cannot pretend that we're making decisions right now on the floor that are not going to affect the long-term effect, the long-term future of our community. We are creating concrete jungles, we are perpetuating cycles of displacement, we are not creating family homes. We have a huge issue here and I think it's something that we really need to look at. I will be voting against it. We need a zoning master plan that makes sense. Going street by street and, and doing piecemeal is not the way that we're going to address the long-term success of this community. This is a really serious, real serious issue and I, I would advise that my colleagues vote against it.
Thank you, Counselor Vidal. So I'm being informed by our council clerk that if you have already spoken on the matter, you cannot speak again. So would you like to speak, Counselor Avellaneda? Okay, so I, so I genu, I genuinely made a mistake, everyone, and I allowed Counselor Vidal to speak.
I voted on the, I voted on the motion laying on the table.
I genuinely made a mistake, I allowed her to speak. I was relying on the counsel of our clerk who just informed me that that was out of order. So your speaking portion was out of order. I apologize to the body, I made a mistake by allowing her to speak again. Can we move on? Does anybody who has not spoken yet would like to speak? That's a no, so we move on to roll call. Clerk, can you please clarify the roll call vote?
If you vote yes, you're accepting the, uh, planning board's proposal on this item. And if you vote no, you're denying it.
Just a clarification?
I see the city solicitor clarification. Go ahead, city solicitor.
So if we added number six into this vote, that's a two-thirds passing. Everything else is a majority under the new zoning laws. So what Counselor, what the Counsel President has put before you is an entire packet to delete number six. So number six is involved in this vote. So therefore, I just want to make sure we're all on the same page. Everything now has to pass by a two-thirds vote. Based on the motion, okay?
Is that clear for everyone?
Two-thirds.
Two-thirds.
Counselor Vidal?
No.
Counsel Avizaneda?
Yes.
Counsel Recupero?
Yes.
Counselor Garcia?
No.
Counsel Vega Maldonado?
Counselor Vega, you're on mute.
Yes, yes, she said?
Yes.
Is it a yes, is it a no?
Yes.
It's a yes.
Counsel Robinson?
Yes.
Counsel Rodriguez?
No.
Counsel Taylor?
Yes.
Counsel Lopez?
No.
Counsel Brown?
Yes.
And Counsel Zabit?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I meant to say no, sorry, I got it wrong.
You don't want it, you don't want it, got to know.
So Counselor Brown, is it no?
Okay, six in favor, one, two, three, four, five opposed, you don't require a two-thirds vote, the motion is denied.
Okay. We move on to the next item before us, which is the marijuana establishment. We have five amendments before us. Do I have a motion?
Motion to adopt a roll call vote.
We have a motion by Counsel Avellaneda to adopt by roll call vote. Do you wish to speak on it?
Nope.
Okay, anyone else wish to speak on the matter? Counselor Vidal.
Thank you, I'll be brief. I just, I know that this is a topic that has been, that has brought a lot of controversy, but I really just want to thank the folks in the community that came up and smoke, came up and spoke on this topic. My apologies. I want to thank everybody that came up and spoke on this, on this topic. I think it's very clear that a lot of the zoning and the decisions that we make here have effects on our overall community. And this is something that has really impacted our communities, the war on drugs. And this is an opportunity to create more opportunities for folks who have been disenfranchised or criminalized from this industry to be able to participate in a way that they can benefit and, and feed their families. And what once jailed us can potentially now free us and give us opportunity to, to pull ourselves out of poverty. So I just really, I think that we're on the right side of history here and I just want to commend, um, Counsel Avellaneda for putting forth the amendment to increase the licenses as well. And just to remind folks, this council has previously allowed that 50% of our recreational marijuana licenses be preserved for folks with economic empowerment certificates or social equity. So we are definitely on the right side of history here and I'll be supporting all of, of these amendments. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else wish to speak on the matter? Looks like no, so we move on to roll call.
Okay, two-thirds required.
Two-thirds.
Counselor Vidal?
Yes.
Counsel Avizaneda?
Yes.
Counsel Recupero?
Yes.
Counselor Garcia?
Yes.
Counselor Vega Maldonado?
Yes.
Counsel Robinson?
Yes.
Counsel Rodriguez?
Yes.
Counsel Taylor?
Yes.
Counsel Lopez?
Yes.
Counsel Brown?
Yes.
And Counsel Zabit?
Yes.
Eleven in favor, none opposed, the motion is adopted. You have two orders here from Counsel Recupero, I think he's gonna pull them and wait. I think he's going to pull them and wait and reintroduce them.
So we have, we have two motions in front of us, actually two amendments. Two amendments before us.
So don't even, okay.
So.
That's it, unfinished business.
Actually, those two amendments are gone because they have been denied.
Okay. Unfinished business is completed.
We are officially done with the unfinished business portion and now we move on to second readings.
Second reading is okay.
So the first item properly before us. We have the ordinance introduced by councillor Avellaneda in regards to limitation on number marijuana retailers to six. I will ask the council clerk to read the motion before us.
Okay. Ordinance introduced by councillor Abadana. Now therefore be it hereby ordained that the revised code of ordinances of the city of Chelsea has amended, be it further amended and adopted as follows. amend chapter 14 licenses permits and miscellaneous business regulations article 11 marijuana establishments as follows. Replace in its entirety section 14-459 limitation on number marijuana retailers with the following. As authorized by Massachusetts general law chapter 94G and 3 subsection 8. Two, the number of marijuana retailers operating within the boundaries of the city of Chelsea shall be limited to a maximum of six.
Thank you. Do I have a motion? Councillor Avellaneda, you have the floor.
Motion to adopt on a roll call vote and if I may speak on it?
You have the floor, you may.
Again, this will increase the number of marijuana retail licenses in the city of Chelsea. It is currently four. We will go to six. So we're adding two. It's not increasing by six. And I, there was a reading earlier that said, oh, by six. No, 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 no. We will only have six. And the reason why I felt this was necessary is because we just approved to expand the areas of where marijuana can now be sold and also we're hoping that the additional two would be going to economic empowerment groups, hopefully local. So by providing new areas to the city of Chelsea that can now have these licenses, also I think it makes the most sense that we will increase the availability of a couple of licenses for those said areas. So I'm hoping my colleagues will follow up with their approval of the expansion of marijuana retail zones with the allowance to increase the licenses by a number of two.
Thank you councillor. I see councillor Vidal. All set, that was an accident. I also see city solicitor, you have your hand raised. Would you like to add something? No? Okay, so mistakes there. Is there anyone else? Going once, going twice? Okay, so we move on to roll call vote. If the clerk can please clarify.
Yes to adopt the proposed ordinance. No would be to deny. Councillor Vidal?
Yes.
Councillor Abadana?
Yes.
Councillor Recupero?
Yes.
Councillor Garcia?
Yes.
Councillor Vega Maldonado?
Yes.
Yes. Councillor Robinson?
Yes.
Councillor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councillor Taylor?
Yes.
And councillor Lopez?
Yes.
Councillor Brown?
Yes.
And councillor Zabit?
Yes.
Eleven in favor. None opposed, motion is adopted. We have the second reading from councillor Robinson with regards to the payment of unexpected, let me see, order that in accordance with the Massachusetts general law section 64, budget management procedures whereby cost incurred by the city in FY20 were not paid and are owed to the vendor. City manager executive department $1,100 on cost in contact and HR department 6965 Kitchers Law Group.
What is the wish of the council?
Roll call vote on the adoption.
Clerk, call a roll.
Councillor Vidal?
Yes.
Yes, the payment. Councillor Abadana?
Yes.
Councillor Recupero?
Yes.
Councillor Garcia?
Yes.
Councillor Vega Maldonado?
Yes.
Councillor Robinson?
Yes.
Councillor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councillor Taylor?
Yes.
Councillor Lopez?
Yes.
Councillor Brown?
Yes.
And councillor Zabit?
Yes.
Eleven in favor, none opposed, motion adopted. Final order on the second readings introduced by councillor Robinson, also to pay the prior year bills. Hef Jones LLC $1,705.52, Justin's $452.75 and ASNE of New England Generator Equipment Testing $1,134.75.
Councillor Robinson? We'll have a roll call.
Councillor Vidal?
Yes.
Councillor Abadana?
Yes.
Councillor Recupero? Councillor Garcia?
Yes.
Councillor Vega Maldonado? Councillor Robinson?
Yes.
Councillor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councillor Taylor?
Yes.
Councillor Lopez?
Yes.
Councillor Brown?
Yes.
And councillor Zabit?
Yes.
Nine in favor, none opposed, two absent. That's it on second reading, Mr. Chairman.
All right, we're now moving on to new business. We have a resolution introduced by councillor Avellaneda regards to 4143 affordable housing trust fund transfer request. Councillor Robinson?
I'd ask to move this to a conference if there are no objections and suspension.
Seeing none, there's a request that this motion be sent to a conference. Seeing no objection.
Next order introduced by councillor Zabit. Order for a subcommittee on conference be held to discuss increasingly emergent issue of trash on sidewalk streets, public and private properties throughout the city.
What is the wish of the council? Councillor Robinson?
Councillor Zabit?
Oh, councillor Zabit, I apologize.
Accepted.
Adopted. No objections. Can, Mr. President?
Councillor Zabit? I'm sorry, councillor Vidal.
Can we send this to a subcommittee of Department of Public Works?
Councillor Zabit, the councillor Vidal is asking that we amend your order so that it could be sent to the Subcommittee on Public Works instead of a Subcommittee on Conference. Are you okay with that?
Yes, that's fine.
Okay. The friendly amendment is adopted, accepted, under suspension.
Next order introduced by councillor Robinson. Request for the city manager to provide an update on Forbes Development Project.
Councillor Garcia moves to accept under suspension. Seeing no objection.
Okay. Next order introduced by councillor Robinson. Request the city manager to provide an update on the FRA train noise. Suspension, okay.
Seeing no objection.
Next order introduced by councillor Recupero.
We'll wait, we'll wait, we'll wait that reading. Move to, oh, councillor Recupero is back, okay.
Your order coming up now.
We have an order for the city manager to create a community center.
Oh, yes, I'd like to vote on under suspension and I'd like to talk about it, speak about it if it's possible.
Councillor Recupero, you have the floor.
For many years, I've been advocating for that. Our city needs a community center. It is the greatest thing. It builds up our community. It establishes relationship between every sector of our community. Every person in our community goes to a community center. And I always heard, we cannot afford it, it's too much money. Who's going to pay for it? Who's going to do this? Who's going to do that? What is the price that we put on everybody's lives? What is the price? There is no price. A community center is a very important, integral part of our community. I was raised in a community center. It's a, it's a great thing to have a community center. There's nothing wrong with having one. And I think it will benefit all the young men and all the young women, the old people, everybody will benefit from a community center. So it's time, then maybe the city itself, with private investors or whatever it is, we have one. I believe our city deserves one. We have a diverse community of many different cultures, many different races and all kinds. It's very diverse. What's wrong with a community? We have a community school. I grant that. We have it. But a community school is not a community center. You have to make an appointment, you have to do this and you have to do that. A community center, like they have in Boston, like they have in Malden, Methfair, whatever, they have them everywhere, whether they have them up the Cape. You can go in and say, I want to come in. You don't have to make an appointment. You can go and see, you can go and talk to other people. So it's a great thing to have one. And I believe the city manager and all of us councils should invest in a community center for our youths, for our old people and for everybody that lives here. It's a great thing and it's about time that we try. Thank you.
Next order, for the city manager to provide a copy of the tech report on Park Pearl Cargo Street studied by the city council. Councillor Recupero?
I'd like to adopt under suspension, like to speak on it if it's possible.
You have the floor, sir.
I think it was in 2019, we had asked for that because back then, if I remember correctly, I was told, we were going to be told after the study was done. I don't know if the study was ever done and if it was done, we should be notified and let us know what the final outcome is. Because that area didn't change much. That area is still very congested and you can't even move. So I would like to know, what is the money that we spent? We spent money on that. We gave money for it to be, have a study. I would like to know, what was the final outcome of it? What does the city intend to do? What are we going to do about that congested place? So I think it's been two years now. It's time that we have an update and it exactly tells us what we're going to do and how you're going to remedy the situation. Thank you.
Next order is an order introduced by councillor Robinson, sections regards to MGL 44, section 40, 60, 64 rather, budget management procedures whereby costs incurred FY18, FY19, FY20 were not paid or are owed to the vendor and to meet this obligation, funds are required for the current FY21. That the city council authorize the expenditures of $150 from FY18, $240 from FY19 and $295, $2,925,000 FY20 from inspectional services to expenditure to line satisfy unpaid emergency bought up services balance owed by maximum emergency services from the previous year.
Councillor Avellaneda, we could just skip, I see two ones for the stores, there was a motion presented by councillor Vidal and councillor Ennio Lopez.
We'll go back to it.
I'll get back to it.
Yeah, finish this.
Councillor Robinson?
Move to a second reading under suspension if there's no objections.
Seeing none. We'll go back to the item just skipped over by accident. Ordered by city manager to look into the property lines, ownership and the common space behind 67 Bellingham Street, 22 Cottage Street, 24 Cottage Street and city property. Councillor Ennio Lopez? You may.
Yes, councillor Vidal and I were contacted by this residence on the side of Cottage Street. We got a shared pathway that leads to driveway. They share multiple, multiple homes, 67 Bellingham, as you mentioned, and 22 and 34 Cottage entrance pathway to access the backyard, to park. But no one knows who owns the pathway. There's an alley there and nobody seems to be responsible for the keeping and considering many homes utilize the pathway to ask the parking spaces. The city of Chelsea should help mediate and support clarifying property lines and ownership of this pathway. Now the concern is many pedestrians walk through this pathway as a shortcut from Cottage to Bellingham and vice versa. This has not settled well with residents in Cottage as they have many trespassers going through the property and backyard. So we'd like to see some clarification, who owns the path, this pathway, this driveway, this alley where people go back and forth at any hours of the day and night. So please, I would like to, city managers to report to us and see who owns that and why 67 Bellingham owns the parking lot in the back and they go through Cottage. Thank you.
Councillor Vidal, any questions? Nope?
No, councillor Lopez did a stupendous job, thank you.
Next order?
I'd answer just by councillor Robinson. Order that in accordance with the Massachusetts general law chapter 44, section 64, budget management procedures whereby a cost incurred in FY20 was not paid and is owed to the vendor and to meet this obligation, funds are required from the current FY21 budget. That the city council authorize the expenditure of $127.73 from the human resource department expenditure line to satisfy the unpaid employee health fare supplies balance of DeMula Supermarket Inc. for prior year.
Move to a second reading under suspension if there's no objections.
Seeing none.
Next order introduced by councillor Robinson. Order that the Chelsea city council authorize the appropriation of $126,000 from the overlay surplus account to the assessive department appraisal services account.
What is the wish of the council?
Actually to move it to a second reading and also request a conference.
And a conference?
And a conference, under suspension if there's no objections.
The last order introduced by councillor Abadana. Order that the city council hereby accepts and approves the United Way of Massachusetts Bay and Merrimack Valley grant in the amount of $465,000 for the public purpose of funding Chelsea eats food debit card.
I'd ask for a roll call vote on the adoption. If there are no objections.
A yes vote would be to accept the grant. Councillor Vidal?
Yes.
Yes. Councillor Abadana?
Yes.
Councillor Recupero?
Yes.
Councillor Garcia?
Yes.
Councillor Vega Maldonado?
Yes.
Yes. Councillor Robinson?
Yes.
Councillor Rodriguez? Okay, councillor Taylor?
Yes.
Councillor Lopez?
Yes.
Councillor Brown?
Yes.
And councillor Zabit?
Yes.
Ten in favor, none opposed, one absent, motion adopted. That's it, Mr. Chairman.
At this time, I'll ask any of my colleagues if they have any special announcements, upcoming events in the city of Chelsea that they'd like to recognize. Councillor Robinson?
For the record, actually on Friday, I'll be receiving my second Corona shot and I encourage people to try to sign up for the shot as soon as possible so we can bring down some of the rates here in our own community.
Councillor Brown?
I'd urge folks as, to go out, as you go out, please continue to stay masked up, please continue to keep the social distance. I know there's been a lot of conversation statewide and nationally, a lot of places are getting a little lax, a lot of places are opening up. But we here in Chelsea, we know the numbers are going down, but we still need to keep a, a hold on this virus, this pandemic. We're not out of it yet. Please, you know, if you're in the category age where you can actually get a shot, there's some lines here that you can contact. There's a lot of efforts here in Chelsea to making sure that Chelsea residents, especially There's a lot of efforts here in Chelsea to making sure that Chelsea residents, especially those over 65, veterans, they're getting the opportunity to get it right away. And then there's other opportunities. But please, continue to mask up and continue to be safe and respectful to your neighbors and to your colleagues. Thank you.
Counsel Lopez? Go over it again, I know Counsel Recupero, couple meetings back, he mentioned something about people who's getting food from, I think, the collaborative or St. Luke's or Salvation Army. What people are doing is taking boxes of food and leaving them on the sidewalks. I've got calls that people are leaving that, and also, they're leaving the boxes with fruits and everything on top of the barrels that the city put. So, which is one that, you know, if you guys don't need the food, don't pick it up, because there's other people who needs it, and for you just to take one thing or a couple of things that you need from the box and leave the rest there, I don't think, then it's, it's not right. People, there's other people hungry, so we should leave the food for people who really need it. Thank you. And also, one other thing that I haven't seen is people blocking the crosswalks with these handicap ramps all around the city. So please have some consideration for mothers who are pulling the strata with the kids, people who are going to the laundromat with big bags pushing carriages. Think about these people that are need that space. Please don't block, and I hope maybe the police be a little more strong and start to do, give them some fines. Thank you.
Just want to remind people that last week, on March 1st, was the beginning of street sweeping in the City of Chelsea. So we want to make sure that you, you know, remember that they're going to start ticketing now, we want to avoid those confrontations, to please be aware of the signage in your neighborhood, and that street sweeping and parking enforcement has started last Monday. Today's our first meeting since that started, so I just want to make people aware to please make sure you move your cars on street sweeping day. Counsel Garcia?
Thank you, President. Just very briefly, all my colleagues have such an amazing place, I would also like to add, aside from the mask and aside from trying to get your vaccine, don't forget to get tested. Please, please, we have seen a decrease in the number of people going out there to get tested, and this is very important information.